Nurse Pete.
Chair Rice.
Yeah.
It is 6:00 PM and I believe we have all commissioners present, so it would be at your discretion.
Wonderful. Thank you, Carlos. Carlos, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Hermosa Beach Planning Commission for July 20th, 2021. May I call on Commissioner Isant to lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Chair Rice. If you would all please stand and place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving, moving on, can we have a roll call, please?
And Chair Rice, and maybe I told just for interrupting, do we lose Commissioner Seaman during the pledge?
Oh.
Let me check on that status here.
Thanks, Matt.
No problem.
Yes, I'm not seeing Commissioner Seaman on the list here, so we did lose him.
Because he was on before, so I do suspect a minor technical glitch. I guess we could, I guess, go through.
I think he's back in. There he is. Yeah, he's logging on right now.
Thank you, Pat. I saw him. Hi, Rob. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I apologize. For some reason, my connection just seems to cut out and as you must rejoin the meeting, and I do, and then it kind of cuts out again. So I'm not sure why that is, but hopefully it'll work itself out and I'll stay connected. So good to go right now. Thank you.
Very well. Rolling back then, Carlos, did we do the roll call and was Commissioner Seaman part of that count?
No, we did not take roll call yet, so we can pick up there.
I called for it, just wanted to make sure. We have a roll call and thank you, Mr. City Attorney for pulling out. We had one man missing in our formation.
Commissioner Seaman?
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Here.
Commissioner Isant?
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Here.
Chair Rice?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Carlos. Moving on, let's go ahead and do oral and written communications, noting for right now, we do have a receive and file on two written communications, one from Mr. Higgins that was on our agenda, an additional communication from Tib, Tim Podcherinsky that was supplemental this this afternoon. So anyone wishing to address the commission on a matter not related to a public hearing on the agenda may do so at this time. If you have joined us via Zoom, please raise your virtual hand and you'll be recognized by Carlos and then unmute. If not, if you're on the phone, if you could, I believe, hit star six and then star nine to unmute, and I'll hand it off to Carlos to see if we have any public speaker.
Thank you, Chair. We do have one hand raised. I will promote them to speak. Mr. Nolan, can you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, give me one second. I apologize.
Carlos, could you have a call for everyone to mute? I hear some ambient background. Somebody's mute is open, and I suspect it's maybe one of our participants because I
Will do.
My colleagues are muted, so I can hear a voice in the background. Thanks. Right now.
Okay. That should hopefully have muted everybody.
Okay. And do we have Mr. Nolan?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to just make public comment on the parking proposals that were posted. I weigh a background. I have nine commercial properties in this, in the town of Hermosa Beach, seven of which are along 11th Street and Lot A. I'm also a resident of Hermosa Beach, so and I'm almost 40-year resident of the South Bay. I've been in Hermosa about six years. If you look at, we've been wanting to try to do something with some older properties that we have, be the Brothers Burrito Building up to almost, almost the corner and also Scotty's over the years, and the single largest barrier to really doing anything has been parking. So I, I do applaud the proposals that were sent around and that you are deliberating on, and I think it's a major step in the right direction. Our parking requirements for Hermosa Beach currently are antiquated and they are really, you know, very, make it very, very difficult to do any development. I'll just give you an example. I have an office on 11th Street and half of my employees, including myself, right, rode our bikes to work today. So you know, the world's changing and technology is changing thing, and I would hope that we can take a serious look at our parking requirements. I also can't emphasize enough how the failure of the Strand Pier project, which is also known as the Mermaid Project, how the failure of that project has put almost a poison pill on those of us that are thinking about trying to do something positive in the downtown sector. And if you really, you know, diagnose, you do an autopsy of why that failed, it's predominantly parking. So a lot of us have hit pause. And I continue to hit pause until we really see some progress on this issue. The other thing, and I know this is not part of what you're considering at this call, but I'm going to just bring it up during the last few seconds is I would also strongly urge the planning commission ultimately to take on the issue of mixed use in the commercial downtown area. I think it's a sustainable move. I think it's a move that would create vitality to our downtown and vitality to our city. There is a overall California housing requirement. I will also have, if I do something with the Brothers Building that has 20 units, I'll run into providing affordable living quarters for those people. So sustainability and allowing me to do a mixed use would also encourage development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Carlos, do we have anyone else who would care to address the commission at this time? Noting, Mr. Nolan, you, we heard your comments now. You will not be able to speak again after, when this item comes up for a public hearing later on our agenda. This was general comment before the hearing started. Thank you. Carlos, do we have any other speakers?
Chair Rice, looking at the attendees, I do not see any additional hands up at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion to receive and file the two written communications in front of us tonight?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Isant. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. We have a motion in the second in discussion.
Chair, if I might?
Yes.
There were two written communications, one from Mr. Higgins, who's well introduced to our city staff certainly, but the second was from, I'll call him Tim P. Raised an issue that I think would be more appropriately handled by Public Works. So if he happens to be listening or is curious about that, that would be an issue too. That's not in our purview, but would be worth bringing up with Public Works, who actually meets tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. So with that, I would end my, end my comment and propose a revote.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Carlos, can you call the vote for us, please?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes.
Item is approved.
Carlos, moving on to our consent calendar, before us tonight, we have the approval of the June 15th Planning Commission Action Minutes. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or corrections on those minutes? And if so, let us know what you got. Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 15th, 2021 meeting?
So moved.
Senator.
You have a motion in a second. Any comments? Seeing none, can we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isant?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
And Chair Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes our consent calendar. We have no resolutions for consideration. So we move on to section two of our meeting hearing, and we have before us the triannual report for on-sale alcoholic beverage and conditional use permits. And I'd like to see if we can get a staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commission. I will give a brief overview. As you know, we do this on a triannual basis. This report covers the period from November 1st, 2020 to April 30th, 2021. We did have some activity during this period that has brought one establishment to meet the threshold, what we call the standard initiating planning commission review. And that is for the business, the deck at 1272 The Strand. They reached the threshold to consider for a potential review based on three citations they received at the end of February and the beginning of March. Each one of them involved them keeping their outdoor patio open past the 10 o'clock restriction in their CUP, as well as two of them, I think, also had health code violations and code enforcement also enforces the orders of the LA County Health Department during the pandemic. So we see that as a total of three CUP violations, as you know, and as well as combined with the other violations, which does bring them to this threshold. So what we have done in the past is for the commission to consider whether further review is necessary, they have received the citations and paid the fines. This number of citations doesn't automatically refer the matter to the prosecutor. So at this point, it's kind of in the planning commission's hands if they believe a revocation modification hearing is necessary for their CUP. In making that determination, you may want to consider the context of the pandemic, you know, the business was, a lot of businesses were struggling that period of time. Another issue that's come up from the business owner is that they had thought that their lease was ending back in March, and now they say their lease is ending at the end of August. So the tenant, it will actually not be in this location likely much longer. With that, that concludes my comments. And this is an opportunity for questions from the commission. Bob Rollins, the code enforcement official is here, as well as Chief LaBaron, if you have any questions about some of the other issues brought up in the report. And then I would also recommend that you open the matter for public comment.
Thank you, Ken. And I know that we had a couple of questions last time on the rest of the report with the deck being separate. I see Vice Chair Peterson's hand up, so we'll start with him. Welcome, Chief LaBaron and Lieutenant Phillips and and Mr. Rollins. I see you all on here. So thank you for joining us for this meeting. Vice Chair, I'll throw to you for your questions of staff at this time.
Yeah, just a couple. I know that the principal issue ahead of us is the deck. I just, or at least the, you know, the kind of the highest standard in terms of action, but I did want to at least just address a couple others. This March 2nd, 2021 incident at Hennessy's. It's on page eight of the report, fight involving six people, two groups, et cetera. A intoxicated group has led in. There was a fight. There was an indication of lack of security, and I'll note for those that are only occasional viewers, oftentimes there are incidences that are not indicative of a lack of security, so they don't get kind of the the attention that this would. It doesn't rise to level of CUP review, but I'm curious, what what do we then do with that information? I mean, dude, does Hennessy's have sort of an all-hands meeting, or I'm not a big fan of, you know, immediately firing people that were involved, but I'm just curious what they did to do better. It doesn't meet the standard. It is notable. Have there been improvements or changes or communication from Hennessy's specific to what they're doing now as opposed to what they were doing on March 2nd? Any, any and all, maybe Landon or Chief LaBaron?
Yeah, Commissioner Peterson, I can speak to that. So following this incident, as we do with our senior peer review of all incidents, anything that rises to my attention or the department's attention as serious crime indicative of lack of security or any of the other factors of this process is we reach out to the business, the general manager or the owner, whoever's the senior manager operator at the location and have that conversation. And I did that. I had the conversation with their general manager and let them know that this would be coming to the planning commission, that we had determined that this was considered a violation of their CUP and that it's bad operating practice to allow intoxicated patrons into a business. They can't be served alcohol. And the general manager agreed that this was a mistake, that it should not have been allowed, but did not indicate that there was going to be any type of disciplinary action on those employees, but they would make sure they take corrective steps to re-educate their employees and their door personnel, that they can't be, they need to be properly screening these individuals. And it was an incident that occurred and they can't undo it, but they assured us that this type of thing is not consistent with how they operate and that these things wouldn't happen again. And I would agree that, you know, for this business or for any business, if it's a one-off, you know, bad things can happen, but as long as it's not a consistent practice or a consistent pattern, then it's not something we're I don't want to say not concerned about, but we know that it's not going to be ongoing. So I have seen in previous incidents, there was an example a few years ago of a an employee who served a minor who is, you know, a minor decoy operation and and that operator informed me that that employee was fired the next day. And I don't think that's, again, what we're looking for. We want the the action to be corrected. And if the business determines they have to let someone go, that's their decision. So getting to the point with Hennessy's, I did have that conversation. They were making adjustments to make sure this type of thing doesn't happen and that they're properly screening their employees or their customers.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the goal is not to, you know, necessarily discipline people or let them go, but to uncover issues in terms of training policies, procedures, practice, because they want people to go out there, have a good time, spend money and get home safely. So then sort of a quick little segue here. Now, sort of in the same time period that the deck had multiple citations, Agave Azul had one citation that was somewhat similar, indoor capacity, social distancing. I'm just noting that that happened and it appears that that was the one time. So I don't, I don't know, I have any more comments on that. I had honestly been by there a few times and it seemed like, you know, maybe their numbers were a little heavy, so I wasn't totally shocked to see that, but it's good that they took corrective action, figured out what they need to do and and especially as we head back into, you know, future lockdowns or masking, et cetera, that you know, the message was sent and that policies and procedures were changed. I, I know everyone's going to have questions on the deck. I just have a question for counsel and then I will stop talking. I think one of the challenges is this, as we've talked about, as was alluded to by Director Robertson, is that we have this situation where the landowner has the CUP. Ultimately, a penalty could be more of a punishment for them than the operator. But the operator's behavior is what we're evaluating. So I'm just curious if, if, you know, Pat, you have any thoughts on how we sort of evaluate the actions of the landlord and their oversight and obligation to oversight versus the management practices of the actual operator and the operating group? Any thoughts on that or guidance for us as we dip into this?
In terms of the, kind of, I guess, the processes and standards, or basically, is there any code section and or document that I can, I can point you to that says, hey, here are kind of the factors for the landlord and then here are the factors for the, for the, for the operator?
Yeah, or just like I say, guidance on, you know, there's, there's activities and there's punishments and we have a business that, you know, perhaps is going to be done by the end of July, although they've had these sort of months and months extensions, like just any guidance. I mean, you don't have any on how to kind of weigh that.
Right. I mean, that's the, unfortunately, that is the discretion of the, of the, of the planning commission. You did kind of hit the nail on the head, so to speak, in terms of this, you know, obviously the CUP does run with the land and that's kind of the nature of CUP, so we can't really do much about that. And then on the other hand, is the operator landlord dynamic, you know, here, you know, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Peterson, you know, it's, that's likely going to be up to, you know, yourself and your and your wise colleagues to kind of, you know, weigh all of those factors in, in your decision.
Good. Appreciate the compliment, but we have, we have at times, I mean, we have taken away CUPs from land based on the activity and the behavior of an operator, probably one in the last 10 years that I can think of. So somehow that determination, I'm not tipping my hand or suggesting that's that, but I'm just trying to kind of understand the landscape since this is new to at least two or three of us. So anyway, those are my comments for now. I have more thoughts on issues with the deck later, but for now, I'll mute and defer to the wisdom of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Isant, I see you, but if I, if I might, I just wanted to hop on to one thing that Vice Chair had sort of brought up.
Go ahead.
Um, as we look at the rest of the report excluding these issues with the deck, Dave brought up an interesting point, which is when there is something like an event at Hennessy's, or it was a lack of management and adequate security, you know, what happens? And I think Landon, you know, answered the question of what happened, what their actions were in following, what the promises have been from that business owner. So what I'm wondering is, further on in the report, we have the Responsible Beverage Service Training Report noting that this, it was the last one we had was March 10 of 2020. Obviously, due to COVID and pandemic, it seems that no training went on, which makes sense since many, you know, we were pretty much down. I think it would be pretty interesting to find out when this Responsible Beverage Service Training would be coming back, when we could expect that, that training and service to be available to our establishment owners. And I think it would be a good practice, not only for the folks that work there, but, you know, management as well. So I just wanted to ask, is there a way for us to know when this is coming back, given that things are opening up? And maybe that's a question for, I don't know, Chief Paul or Landon, or I guess even even Ken, so.
So Chairwoman Rice, I can start with that, and that is, we discussed that today. I think the, really what needs to happen at this point is once our partners who help present that class are ready to do it, we're ready to host it and get it going again. So it would really just, the first step from where we're sitting is to reach out and see if they're able to. And if they're, if they're geared up and ready to go enough, so that we can certainly host it and make it happen. I'll defer to my colleagues if there's any other comments they want to make on that.
Okay, don't feel like we have any other comments. And then Chief, just for you, sort of, as a thought, again, this report we have in front of us is March 10 of 2020, noting that three of the attendees of this training failed with a post-test score of less than 70%. And so I would ask, maybe we contemplate, because I don't think I had seen that before. I've participated in the training or observed it, not participated, noting that it's a pretty lengthy training. You're given all the answers and then they ask you the questions. So I not sure how somebody could fail that, but that being the case, if you could put some thought around what those next steps might be for those establishment owners who've had folks that failed the test of Responsible Beverage Training and what those next steps might be and whether it's a smart idea to have those folks actually serving alcohol in their establishments, given the ramifications of that. So I sort of leave that more as a thought than, you know, as a question. And so that concludes what I was looking for on that, and I'd like to hand it off to my colleague, Commissioner Isant, who had his hand raised. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Rice. I do have a couple of questions regarding the deck, but it sounds like we're going to have a focused deck conversation a little later. So I'm not sure if I should address this to the chief or the lieutenant or Bob, but on page 17 of the report, this is the calls for service. I seem to recall somewhere that a call for service associated with the name of a facility doesn't necessarily mean the problem was at that facility, but rather that was the closest location geographically where that happened. And so if my memory is correct, then I guess I have to ask the question about the Comedy and Magic Club, which is closed, having three incidents. And Radici, which is, you know, generally just a regular, nice upscale restaurant, having 14 incidents. And so if whoever is most appropriate could address those, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Commissioner Isant, I can speak to that. So you are correct that a call for service in circumstances of, say, a residential property, that's generally associated to the specific address, if it's known. In these reports, it's not uncommon for an incident to occur. Somebody would call either code enforcement or the police department and, you know, will ask, well, where are you? I'm standing in front of Comedy and Magic Club. When it has nothing to do with the business, it may be on the sidewalk or street in front of the business. So you're correct that the calls for service, we have to establish a landmark, and that's what the call for service does in our records management system, and that's how we pull these reports. So if there are some numbers that are not associated with the business, we do review it, but if it's not related, then we pretty much just dismiss it from consideration of the CUP review. So that, that would answer, I think, the three at Comedy and Magic Club. The 14 at Radici, you're absolutely right. This jumped off the page at us as well. And this is something that's pulled, as I mentioned, out of our records management system, and it it produces a report that we have to then analyze. Radici, during this period, they placed a kiosk outside of their business, and this was during the time when there was more of a need for takeout and delivery services, and they needed a mechanism to be able to operate and to be able to better connect with patrons who were walking by. So they placed this kiosk and great idea. I think it was helpful for the business, but it created an odd attractive location for, I'll say, the homeless community. And of these 14 calls, I believe 10 or 11 of them were all homeless individuals that were either trying to occupy the kiosk or take something occupy the kiosk or, or take something from the kiosk because it had some stuff in there. And it just, it was out in the open. It wasn't behind a counter, behind a closed door that most businesses would generally do. And before the outdoor dining decks were established, this kiosk just generated a lot more attention and therefore calls for service to address these nuisance issues. So there was nothing there at Radici's during this reporting period that indicates the business was operating poorly or outside of what we, we hope to see businesses do, but they were just trying to get creative and inadvertently created this attraction.
Just to build on that, Chair Rice, if I may, on page 15, Barnacles had 11 calls for service. And can you give us that breakdown again? Is, do we have a problem Barnacles? Or is it just they happen to be nearby where there's a lot of calls for service?
In the, the situation of Barnacles, this was, and I think it was mentioned in the previous, but I think there is some overlap there. We, we had some challenges with Barnacles and operating within the county health order restrictions of not operating or operating only for takeout and delivery. We had some occasions where the, their outdoor patio area was, people were waiting and consuming as they were waiting for their takeout food. So I will say it was for Barnacles, it was more that they were not operating within the modified restrictions of the county health orders. And I know that code enforcement spent a significant amount of time educating and reeducating and so that, that created calls for service. So some of it was self-initiated, meaning that we didn't receive a call from a resident or patron that we actually went out there, observed a violation, made a contact. That will also create the call for service, but none of their indications on this period rose to the level of a violation.
And for the current period, which of course we won't have a report for until later, have we offhand, do, have we had many calls for service or have things settled down there?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Rollins weigh in, but from my perspective at Barnacles, things have settled down.
Thank you.
That's what code enforcement has found as well. The relaxing of the quarantine, although it might come back, but this period where it's been relaxed by state and county officials haven't had any unusual activity from Barnacles since pandemic restrictions have been lifted.
Thank you, Bob. Chair Rice, that's all that I have. I do have some deck comments, but I'll save that to the deck session.
Okay. Commissioner Seaman.
Thank you, Chair Rice. I have a question for, I think Mr. Rollins would be the best one to answer this. And this goes back to the deck again, as a preliminary question before our discussion, which was certainly to follow later. And that question is this, and it, and it goes to the responsibility of the actions of the tenant versus the landlord in, in situations like this. When, when these violations occur, and in this case there were four of them, is the landlord notified almost immediately? In other words, the same, same letter goes out to the owner or the, excuse me, the tenant at that business, that there's been a violation and so on and so forth? Does a notice, the very same notice go out to the owner at the same time?
Yes, we basically send the copy of the letter and citation that we sent to the business operator with a brief cover letter. Your property owner advised that this is what's happening on this date and time on your property.
Okay. So they get notified the same in, in each instance. So all four times, there are four letters sent out to the owner as well as the the tenant at that time.
That is our practice and policy. I believe it was followed. I have no reason to think it wasn't.
All right. Thank you. That's the only question I have for the moment. This goes to some comments I would like to make later, but I think after all the discussion, we, you know, we'll, we'll continue on after. So, thank you.
Chair Hoffman, do you have any questions of staff? Now that we've made it all the way around on any of the items contained within the
No, I'm, I think we've covered everything and, you know, the only comment I would make and maybe the lieutenant and chief would nod their head as well. Being too critical of how many calls for service to a particular address or establishment can in fact be a disincentive for them to take the proper initiative to reach out when there is a problem. And so we want to always be careful and as the lieutenant has pointed out, the address doesn't necessarily tell us that there's a problem at, with that business, but rather at that site.
Commissioner Hoffman, if I could just comment, I am nodding my head to what you said. We also in our communication with the owners of those restaurants, make sure they understand that there is a process we go through before we attribute a negative call to service for them. We will pull the call and look at it and determine whether or not it needs to be considered. So we are concerned about the same thing. The last thing we want is to disincentivize calling the police when they're needed. And they, they should be able to call in confidence because they've heard it from us that that's not something that we hold against them.
Right. I, I, and you, well, I guess it was slightly before you joined the force, there was an establishment downtown that basically every call for service on the plaza was reported to that particular address. And it created a certain amount of animosity in the business community and, and I think appropriately so. But I'm not suggesting this the case here and you've cleared up the differences. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I sort of like to wrap up. Chief, do you have any? Is now the appropriate time to ask you if you'd like to weigh in or give us your sense of these of the deck and the violations that bring us, brings us to consider a review and revocation hearing?
I will comment on that and absolutely understand where Director Robertson is coming from in, in his comments that it was a unique time and these were violations that were happening based on a unique circumstance. But one of the things that the police department, as we work with code enforcement and work in our enforcement efforts, one of the things that we always try to do and consider is making sure that we are being equal and, and not only our enforcement, but the way we approach things. And so I acknowledge that it was a unique time and, and I acknowledge businesses were suffering, but one of the things that I would like the commission to consider is all the businesses were suffering. And I know in the case of code enforcement, because I've been out and I've seen how they do things, they couldn't be more professional in the way they handle their business. It, they, they don't just go out and cite somebody the first time. They, they talk to them, they warn them, they, they work with them. So I'll let Mr. Rollins and Mr. Robertson comment on that more specifically, but from what I've seen, to get to the level of three citations in a reporting period, that, that's pretty significant. And all I would say in that is that the other businesses were suffering just as much to try and stay alive. And they didn't have that same result. So we have to consider that everybody was going through the same thing. And, and this is one that stood out amongst the rest. And even though it was a unique time, we, we have a responsibility to everybody to make sure we're approaching this with a, with a fair approach.
Thank you, Chief, for answering that for us. Do any of my colleagues have any follow-up questions for the chief? Okay. Seeing none, I would like to open public comment on this item. I'm seeing that we have a hand raised. Carlos, can you go ahead and bring on our Zoom participant, Kathy Knoll?
Absolutely. And as a reminder for those calling in, to press star nine to raise your hand. Kathleen, can you hear us? Kathleen, can you hear us? A reminder to unmute yourself, Kathleen.
I didn't realize I had the control. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes. And you're also welcome to turn on your camera if you'd like.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, okay. So my name is Kathy Knoll. I am one of the owners of the deck. I thank you guys for commissions, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. So as everyone had just mentioned previously, COVID was a very difficult and confusing time for businesses and our patrons. With COVID closing our inside of our restaurant off and on for over a year, most of which we were only allowed to be outside with 15% capacity, 15 people. And if you've been to the deck, you know, we have an interior patio. And since this was our personal interior patio that was taking the place of being indoors for indoor dining, we believed we could stay open according to our CUP for inside, which is till 2:00 AM. So that was our understanding during COVID. We were also given some space outside by Good Stuff and the city had a curfew of 11 o'clock for outdoor dining. So outside's okay for 11 o'clock, but now within all through COVID up until March, then we were told we had to close at 10 o'clock. So it was all very confusing. So we thought that we could follow that same timeframe and I, and I've actually been asking this question and I still really haven't gotten clarification on it, that when the county decided that you had to be outside to replace inside, did it follow that CUP? And by the way, we followed business as the previous owners that had always been open past 10 o'clock. So it was, we've never had a violation in seven years for being outside a past 10 o'clock until COVID happened. But if you, if we fell under the requirements of the city of the 11 o'clock curfew, one of our violations was at 10:24 with four people outside. So it would be that this would now, those three violations of CUP would actually be a moot point. I'd also like to mention that I don't think that this situation or these violations, because they were really COVID related, were really the true intention of this, what these reviews are supposed to be about with the planning commission. It's not a cage of, a case of underage drinking. It's not a case of fights. It's not a case of violence, excessive noise. We had a couple of people on our interior patio. I would have petitioned this back in March, but we were literally supposed to be leaving March 30th and then April 30th. And we really thought that that was the end of it. So I thought it was going to be again, a moot point for, for us to go any further with this. I did pay the fines, however. The last few months have been the hardest to control customers. We voluntarily have closed on several occasions because customers have become very unruly and would not listen to our staff, especially towards those last months of, in March. As I mentioned, we did not know that we were supposed to be closed at 10, but after we were warned, as Chief LaBaron just said, code enforcement has been very cool with us. We had a bartender that was on his way out and he went rogue on his own. And I think it almost became a personal affront to our code enforcement officer that he was not playing by the rules and he was playing by his own rules. We've also rectified that and by letting him go. As you hopefully know, as us, as business owners, as a residents, I know many of you know me, we are super involved in the city. We give back to our community. We help host several city events at the deck. Most recently, we hosted the post unveiling of the lifeguard pride tower. We are community leaders and we try to play by the rules. We are team players with our city staff and officials. I think Chief LaBaron and code enforcement would agree with this. We've had several conversations trying to cooperate and collaborate. This, this started a long time ago with Chief Papa. When we first opened seven years ago, I had Chief Papa and her staff come down and speak to my staff on how to handle unruly customers and over serving and, you know, drinking. And I've always really, really appreciated this collaborative approach that we've had with the police department and our code enforcement. So I would really ask that you put this matter to rest tonight. We are confirmed that we're leaving at the end of August. We begged to stay the final month so that we could just close up the summer and give the patrons that last opportunity to be at the deck. We've already paid $1,100 in fines, which it stings a lot after the year we've had, which I believe is punishment enough. As you know, the deck and the poop deck have been a special place. We have just tried to keep this iconic bar open for our community to enjoy one last summer. Again, we're closing at the end of this month and so we'll hope that we can just, again, put this to rest. And I'm, I'll stay on for any questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Carlos? Do we have anyone else raising their hand?
Yes, we do have one additional person wishing to speak and I will. And this is a caller. Caller, can you unmute yourself by pressing star six, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. And a reminder to state your name and you will be allowed three minutes to speak.
Thank you. This is Jonathan Wicks, resident in Hermosa Beach and apologies if this is off topic, but you know, there's a lot of focus on code enforcement for commercial properties in the city. And I was just wondering if the planning commission or the code enforcement officer could speak to code enforcement of residential properties and if there's ever any code enforcement performed on single-family homes and residents in the city. And that's, that's my question. Thank you.
Reminding folks that we are in a hearing now on the tri-annual CUP report. So if you have a comment you'd like to make on this item, please raise your hand. I think I see another hand raised. Carlos, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do have another caller. And let me go ahead. That I believe, do you still have your hand raised, sir?
Oh, that hand raised is, I think, Mr. Wicks. I don't.
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anyone else and it looks like he's still, he's muted. So I think that caller is over. So I guess we'll do a last call for anyone else who'd like to weigh in, either raise your virtual hand or make yourself known and press star six and star nine to unmute if you're on the phone. Okay. Last call, hearing none. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and deliberation. Thank you, Carlos. Commissioner Hoffman, I see a hand raised, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I've, I've heard a couple of different things. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. And that is the business that we're talking about, in spite of the letter that was part of our initial packet, is now going to be operating at least through the end of August. It, that's, I believe what Kathleen said and, and we haven't heard anything from the owner, so I assume that's the case. And, and that raises a concern, I guess, in the sense of if, you know, I, I believe it was she that said, well, we thought we were closing at the end of the much of, or of March back then. In this, for lack of a better term, this sort of sense of an eviction party atmosphere going on at the deck when this initial set of incidences occurred. I'm hearing a little bit different now in terms of, of confusion over whether the CUP applied outside equally to inside and vice versa. But I, I, I want to make sure that we're talking about a business and the use that will continue at least through August. And, and the obvious thing, I mean, I'll say it for all of us, I'm sure all of us share the concern and, and Dave certainly raised the question. If we were to take extraordinary action at this point on that property, it's going to penalize the property owner more than it's going to penalize the operator for the next month. And so it, it's, it's, you know, and I've heard from Bob and others that there haven't been problems since then. So I'm, I, I was torn before we got into this and, and that is heard from the conversation this evening. But I was primarily concerned by, at that point, the fact that we were talking about a business that had a week to go essentially. Now we're talking about a business that has roughly six weeks to go. I'm, I, I, you know, Kathleen has demonstrated herself to be a good operator in other instances. I'm, I, I, you know, Kathleen has demonstrated herself to be a good operator in other instances. I'm, I'm a bit reluctant to take an extraordinary action to set this place for a revocation or a, a hearing, which in fact, wouldn't occur for a month anyway, which would take us to the end of, of the effective period here. So remembering that tonight, all we're doing is making the determination whether or not to set it for a, a hearing on their CUP. And recognizing the timeframe, my perspective, I hate to say it, is, is, it, it makes no sense to me. I don't think that the, you know, the fundamental part of a CUP is this an appropriate use for that particular site with the rules that we've attached. I think it is, and I believe that it can operate, and it has, with this brief exceptional period, so. I, 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 I just think we're in kind of a, a corner in terms of what really makes sense to do in fairness to both the property owner and to the operator. But uh, and even more so, given the, the change in timing. My thoughts at that point.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Vice Chair Peterson, I saw your hand next, and then Commissioner Seaman.
Um, yeah, question for staff and then comments is, I mean, the, the next step, we're gonna have a hearing, which is a deeper dive into it. It's not an indication of action. Is there? Um, this is, I guess, for Patrick. Is there, is it sort of a binary choice? CUP revocation or not, or could there be adjustments or other conditions raised as part of the meeting? I mean, what, what is, what is in our toolkit? Next month, if we do have a meeting next month on this?
Yeah, 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 correct. It, it's not binary. It's not either leave it as is or revoke it. There's, you could modify the conditions. You can add new conditions. In fact, if, if I can speak freely, that's, you know, typically what, what I, what myself from legal perspective would advise you to do versus this, you know, total re, you know, revocation. But so, yeah, so it's not binary. That's one option on the far end of the spectrum, the other one being modifying the conditions.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I acknowledge for, you know, on, at least I guess on behalf of Pete, maybe others, that there's, it's sort of an odd time um, in terms of occupancy, et cetera. My inclination would be to at least have the hearing to understand more about the levels of notice. You know, what, what actions, if any, the, the landlord took um, based on the notice they received, et cetera, and you know, they sent us a letter saying that we should drop this because they were leaving at the end of July. I know they'll leave at the end of August, and they could have other extensions perhaps. It's, it's unclear to me what the plans are for um, for that property vis a vis um, the owners, Bluer. So my, my inclination would be to have the hearing just to kind of further understand what's going on there. Um, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pat.
I, I just wanted to maybe clarify my comments. The uh, Vice Chair Peterson, you could also have that hearing and, and do nothing as well. So I didn't, I didn't want to say that. Got it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And that, and that could very well happen. I, I don't have an opinion on what should happen. I'm, I think we should talk about it more, which leads to a hearing. So that was the Jenna, that was the crux of my comments. Thank you very much. And you're right. Leaving things as is, is a appropriate action as well, or potential action. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, Commissioner Seaman did get some, uh, one way in?
Yes, I had some comments to make. Um, the reason I asked if the um, owner of the property gets noticed right along with um, the operator, uh, I, I wanted to be sure that, that I understood um, how the management of this, of these violations was handled. And I have to say this, i- if, you know, as a property owner, I think the property owner has two very valuable assets. One is the building itself and the opportunity to own a, a building and, and have a business in, in, in this area and this wonderful city of that nature where the CUP that involves uh, alcohol sales and so on. I think that's one very valuable asset, and I think the CUP is the other valuable asset. Uh, so, and as a landlord, you would think that they would want to protect both of them equally. Perhaps the, the CUP may be more important than the building itself, but what I'm trying to say is, is that they got a notice for each of these things, and did they just ignore those notices? And, or maybe make a phone call and say, hey, take care of this and, and just let it go? Or did they take the attitude that, well, you know, we're closing in a couple of months and it's uh, you know, no big deal? Uh, I, I think that's a, not a great attitude to have, and, and I think that there should be some consequence for these three violations uh, to the building owner. Um, a- and perhaps the um, uh, the operator too, but uh, so I think that I would be more likely to have the hearing in order to discuss those facts in greater detail and, and, and get a better handle on this. I don't know what that consequence should be, certainly not revocation perhaps, but you know, something I think uh, needs to be discussed at least about uh, what to do when this situation arises. So um, a- and that's, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, I think.
Uh, sure, right. Yes, first a, a comment. I've got a little bit of a disconnect on when the owner of a property is noticed. Uh, Bob said that the owners of the property get noticed when these violations occur. Uh, yet on the other hand, the email that we have from Mark Ballour dated June fifteenth says, this has just come to his attention. So maybe the city contacted a different partner of the property owner, but if Mark is the primary contact in the city, he's claiming he didn't know anything about this until June. So having said that, I would also be in support of having a public hearing for a couple of reasons. One is, I really would want to focus a little bit more on uh, the communication process for tenants and landlords. Uh, secondly, you know, I don't know the operator, as it appears that Peter does, but she said she had to beg to stay for August. If I was the landlord of the property, I'd let her stay as long as possible until I had a new tenant. Why would you have a vacant building if you didn't have someone lined up? Now, if they do for September first, great. But uh, this particular operator could be there through the end of the year if the owner of the property doesn't have a tenant. So at a minimum, I would like to explore this further in a public hearing. I agree uh, with Peter and Patrick that this doesn't rise to the level of revocation of the CUP. But um, I, I, I think some more discussion in a public forum, in a public hearing with possible options um, is something I would support.
Thank you, Commissioner. So it's down to me. Um, Ken, could we, or Bob, can we follow up now and ask just a couple of follow-up questions? Kathy Knoll made a couple of comments about confusion around the hours of operation. Inside their inner outdoor space and then additional space that was given near Good Stuff. The difference between health order and uh, the city's order. And so, and then a comment about that violation at uh, ten forty, ten forty-six. Do you, do you have anything that you can share with us just to address those comments from the uh, establishment operator?
Uh, certainly, the county health rules fluctuated all last summer and up until the spring, depending on uh, the level of hospitalizations and deaths. Uh, we stayed on top as best we could. Uh, brand new building, Nueva, helped the city understand how we should um, use the most recent iteration, and, and for a while there last spring, those rules changed every two or three weeks. Uh, then city council would weigh in and, and adopt city policies for it. So I agree with Kathy and anybody else that would say that it was confusing. These uh, violations occurred last March, which was oh, a year into pandemic and various state city and the county uh, restrictions. I believe that the citation she was talking about that occurred at ten twenty-six was not due to being open too late. It was due to overcrowding, violation of county health rules.
Now, let, let me speak to that. Um, just for clarification, the CUP allows indoor operation till two AM. But the private patio by the condition is from its limited till ten PM, so that rule never changed by any health order. What the health department said was, you know, there was a period where you couldn't operate inside at all, so they gave, it was up to the cities if they were going to allow restaurants to operate outside. Um, of course, they could operate outside under the terms of their use permit, which is ten o'clock. She's speaking to the confusion where the city placed the eleven o'clock rule on the rights-of-way uh, permissions, like for example, outside of Good Stuff. So I, I suppose there's some confusion there, but the health department didn't speak to uh, the hours. They just, I don't recall anyway. It was uh, regarding, related to indoors or outdoors. But certainly, there was a lot of changing, moving parts at the time.
And just to be clear, this report covers the time period of November twenty twenty to April twenty twenty-one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so can you just give us then, just for clarification, for anyone listening and for myself, can you give us the, um, the dates of all of these violations? Do you have those?
Yeah, it's in the report. It was a
It all happened in March, I believe.
It's uh, February twenty-sixth, March twelfth, and March nineteenth.
Okay, of twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, um, so we have heard from all of us. Uh, let's see, what I'm hearing is um, an interest from three of my colleagues to schedule the hearing. Um, Commissioner Hoffman, you know, I, I think, I'm not going to speak for him, but said, not, not quite sure um, that he would do it, given the length of time and also the history of this operator in our community. And with the news that things have gotten better and all, if I've mischaracterized that, Pete, I'll, I'll, I'll throw it back to you.
I, I would simply note that uh, if we do this, it's not just, well, I'm curious, let's talk about it. If I'm the operator and I'm the property owner, I now have to lawyer up, I have to come prepared to have my CUP revoked and/or significantly modified in such a way that it diminishes rubs. Exactly correct. This is, you know, the entitlements of any property are what make them valuable. Uh, it's, it's not a small thing for us, and I, I, I'm not, well, this is the appropriate opportunity for us as a commission to get information uh, to decide whether or not we want to have a, a hearing, and if so, what we're going to do with that hearing. Uh, and to suggest that we might have a hearing and to take no action. Uh, that's really a, a significant penalty to the applicant, whether we intended that to be or not. If we're looking to penalize the applicant for, uh, and when I say applicant, not the applicant, but the individual here. Um, as was mentioned, they've already paid over a thousand dollars in fines. If we don't think the fines are appropriate to bring about conformance with their CUP, then that's an issue we should be raising with our council. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm just reluctant to suggest that we just casually say, well, let's go ahead and set this so we can talk about, for example, the city's procedure of notifying the owner and so on and so forth. I, I'm, that, that's my reservation.
Okay.
CUPs are not intended to be punitive. CUPs are intended to regulate land uses that have predictable uh, impacts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, Ken, can you address something that, that has come up? And I think is sort of weighing on the minds of all of us in that um, we were, you know, the business thought they were out of there in March, then it was April, here we are. It was July, we had a, a letter from the owner um, that's saying this uh, business will no longer be you know, established in, in July, and now we have August. So some of the things I heard from my colleagues are, um, well, you know, they maybe they're much longer given the plans for a tenant and what, and you know, when that move-in date might be, and when that new tenant operates. Do you have any insights to provide us on what Ballour is doing with this um, site? I believe there is a tenant, but there's a change in use and there needs to be some construction. I mean, that's sort of what I've heard out and about, but if you could clarify that for us, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, the best I could describe is we've had preliminary application, preliminary discussions with the property owner um, regarding the future potential tenancy and what that would take in terms of either amending the CUP or somehow using the CUP. Um, it's a different, at least at this stage, a different concept that would involve a market, but perhaps having some on-sale beer and wine service. Um, but all that is tentative and preliminary. But, you know, I, I do believe their intent is to try to have something going after summer in terms of starting construction.
Okay, so intention that's been communicated is to start construction after the summer. A different concept, but that in fact, may have both on-sale and off-sale, a different
Um, I, I, I don't want to speak to what their final application's gonna include, but it, it, so far, the intent did not include off-sale.
Okay.
So I guess I, I'm just speaking speculatively, I guess, is the way I characterize it.
Okay, um, oh, Commissioner Seaman. Rob, you're muted.
Um, dear, just quick discussion here, just brought up another question I would have for uh, uh, Ken. It's uh, I, I have heard the same thing, that they're, they're possibly going to open up a, a store of some type. And did you say they were having some alcohol service? So in other words, this would be some sort of a store, just as speculation here, that this would be some sort of store that sells beer and wine uh, to go, but also has the place to sit down and drink in, in, in it, inside of it. Is that correct? Did I misunderstand what you said?
Uh, one of the concepts they're considering is all I can say at this point.
Okay, and would that consider, would that uh, require a, a new CUP or uh, revisions to the existing one?
It depends on the details, which haven't been worked out.
But it could.
Could.
Yeah, of course, they could just change their mind and open up another, kind of another deck there if they wanted to, and
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's the only question I had. I, um, because I thought I misunderstood you, but I understand now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, oh, Commissioner, Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes, um, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly feeling, and hopefully those that watched um, are sensing just some, at least for me, kind of some preventive ambivalence and kind of frustration. I don't like being put in this position. You know, I, it's, you know, we talked about this briefly at the last meeting. You know, the explanation from Kathy's a little different, or maybe some more color to it. You know, the, the owner said that they'd be out at the end of July. They didn't update their letter. They're not here to talk, so I'd like more information. Um, I don't know if it's possible to defer this for a month and have Mr. Ballour here and others here. I don't know if that's an option. I mean, I agree with Pete, like requiring a hearing is um, you know, it's a big next step, but at the same time, I think in terms of sort of getting clarity or consistency in terms of, you know, what the owner knows and what they're doing, what the um, operator knows and what they're doing. I think most anyone in our, that was in our chairs would be kind of frustrated. Um, so those are just my thoughts. I mean, if, if there was a motion to have a hearing, I suppose I would vote for it, but I would also be in favor of maybe deferring. Um, I'm, I'm honestly surprised that the, the owner of the CUP isn't here to speak with us tonight. To just share some, share some details on it. Maybe they're To just share some, share some details on it, maybe they're not concerned. I, again, I don't know, it's tough to mind read, but it is, this is just a frustrating situation to be put in.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Question, now that a part of our parameters is that the chief at any time may bring. So are we tied to the timing of this report? In other words, do we, must we schedule, can we do it to a different date? Does it have to be the next meeting? Do we have, what sort of leeway do we have as vice chair is asked?
Um, and Chair S, I apologize, you kind of cut out, but I'm pretty sure I, I, I followed the, the question. Whether being, do you have to set a hearing for the next meeting? And, and my reading of it and, and Ken, I'm, I'm, I'm all ears, is that no, you, you do not have to. You would not have to make this decision right now. I think it'd be totally within their discretion to kick it one more. And as Vice Chair Peterson said, hey, you know, bring the, you know, get the property owner in here or, or whatever to, to get more information. Now, that being said, I would also caution against it indeterminate continuation. We don't want in 2022 to be referencing back to, to this. So, but one, but one continuation I think is, is totally acceptable.
Okay, and I apologize for the audio, can, am I, can you hear me now? Okay, good. All right, so. Part of the report is a determination of whether further review is necessary for the deck. As they've reached the standard for initiating a review. So a motion then might include. What, how would you like that motion to be crafted if in fact we have three that are with supportive?
So I mean, my, my reading of it would, would simply be a motion to continue the planning commission's review. For considered, you know, continued discussion and deliberation, whether or not to set a modification slash revocation here.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. All right, Commissioner Isaac.
Vice Chair Rice, I would so move the eloquent language of our attorney. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Isaac. Did I hear a motion from Commissioner Hoffman? I did, okay. Our pardon?
Yeah, it was Steve's motion and Pete seconded it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. All right, any further deliberation or questions at this time on the motion on the floor?
I'll, I'll just quickly comment if I might share that our, our goal next time is to understand what really happened. So. You know, I, I would want to hear from the relevant parties that we've spoken to. You know, no, no doubt there are a lot of, you know, enthusiastic patrons of the deck as, as we all know. And I, you know, it's, it's not, it's not our, you know, determination to be an obstacle or be pro or anti-business or whatever. Those aren't the issues. We just want to understand what's going on from the people that were involved to make reasonable, informed decisions on a CUP. That's it. So I will support the motion.
Very well, Commissioner Seaman.
Yes, just one last comment on the motion. I agree that, that the hearing is, is a big next step. And this seems to be a reasonable, more charitable move to extend this review. But one thing that I think would be most important for that review would be the presence of the owner of the building. And so, I mean, we can't subpoena anyone or whatever, but how do we go about? Uh, in order to make the review effective and, and to get that down to the bottom of things and, and who did what and why and, and so on. How do we be, be certain that a representative from the owner of the building would be at that review? Is there some, how does that happen? What, what's the procedure for that? Perhaps it's a question for Patrick.
I mean, yeah, you, you did hit the nail on, on the head. Unfortunately, the, the planning commission does not enjoy the legislative subpoena power that the, the city council does. You know, I'm confident in, in, in staff's ability to, to adequately relay the seriousness of this matter. And as you said, that arguably this could be couched as a charitable, charitable move by this commission. So it would be in everyone's extreme best interests to attend or, or, you know, to show up at the next meeting, wh- where this is at. But outside of that, there's, there's not really anything we can force them to do. Even though there's not, there's nothing we could have done to force them to show up to the potential modification or revocation hearing either, so.
Right, I suppose then that if we had this extension and we had this meeting next month. Uh, and, and no one still showed up, then, then at that point, we could always say, well, then I guess we're going, we need to have a, a, a full hearing and review.
Correct, yes.
And we do that then, so. And in light of that, I, I think this is the, is a fair thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, and so I, I would, I would support this, I think, this motion that we have on the floor right now.
Very well, any other comments at this time? Saying none, Carlos, do you want to go ahead and call the boat on the motion on the floor?
Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Isaac?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Carlos. Okay. We are now moving on to section three of our meeting, moving on to public hearing. Uh, our first item is our public hearing notices and project counting maps. There's no action to be taken. We move on to item number nine, which is Con 20 dash two, PDP 21 dash two. VTPM eight three one six oh, a conditional use permit, precise development plan and tentative parcel map. Number eight three one six oh, for a two unit detached condominium project at eight fifty six Cypress Avenue. And determine that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
To recuse myself on this item, the property in question is immediately in our proximity. So I will be recused.
Okay, we will reach out to you when it's time to come back. Thank you. Wait for Commissioner Hoffman to exit the meeting. He has to fully leave, right, Pat?
Yeah, typically that's, that's, you know, there is potential some gray area in case someone has technical difficulties. But typically, yes, the, the, the standard practice is for him to leave permanently. And I believe he may have just done so.
Locked off, very, very. Okay, can we move forward with the staff report on this item, please?
Thank you, Chair. The subject site is located on the east side of Cypress Avenue, where the street terminates at Clark Field to the north. The 3,150 square foot lot currently contains a single family residence. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing single family residence and construct two detached residential. Three bedroom, two bath condominium units on the lot. The applicant proposes to provide parking access from Cypress Avenue through a shared driveway on the site's south side of the lot. There's currently no curb cut on the public right of way in front of the property. The existing right of way consists of a brick pavement and a concrete driveway leading to the garage. The applicant proposes to improve the site with a curb cut and gutter and nine foot, one inch concrete driveway. As a result, the new improvements would create one on-street parking on Cypress Avenue. As part of a separate permit with the Department of Public Works, the applicant is proposing a 1,000 square foot encroachment to the north of the property closest to Clark Field. The encroachment area includes a mixture of artificial turf and medium to medium low 20s. The existing retaining wall is proposed to remain. The project investing tentative parcel map as conditioned are consistent with the zoning code, subdivision laws and other relevant provisions of the municipal code. And the site is physically suitable for the type and density of the proposed development. Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution approving the conditional use permit, precise development plan, investing tentative parcel map. For a two unit detached condominium project at eight fifty six Cypress Avenue. And determine that the project is categorically, categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The applicant and owner are here tonight to answer any additional questions you may have. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Melanie, and noting for my colleagues and anyone watching, we did have a supplemental this afternoon. Um, on the, the PC resolution in front of us. I noted one change on. Underneath the findings on page three of that relating to generating traffic volumes. Melanie, can you advise, were there any other changes in the resolution?
No, that change was made to reflect a, a typo. But no other items were changed.
Okay, so colleagues, we would be then looking to approve the supplemental resolution with the same number. But it's the one that we received after the publication of our agenda packet. So just wanted to clarify that, uh, we, we can go ahead then and hear from Melanie. Who, who do we have, the applicant and, and a representative on the line? Or willing to, to speak on it?
Yeah, I'm going to promote Brandon Strauss, who's the applicant representative.
Thank you.
Good afternoon or evening, commissioners, I am Brandon Strauss from Soror and Associates. On behalf of the applicants, Kelly, oh, sorry, Kyle and Wendy Bergstreser. Thank you for the opportunity to present this application. And also thank you to the staff for a comprehensive report and assistance in getting to this hearing. I do have a few slides I'd like to show as I speak, may I share my screen? Thank you. So tonight, the applicants seek your approval of the described two unit condominium development at eight fifty six Cypress Avenue. Including a tentative parcel map. Currently, the single family residence on the site is 66 years old. The property is zoned R3 and located in the sand section, which includes a range of residential development types. The Plan Hermosa design goal for this area favors buildings with articulation over flat box-like facades and. See, okay, there it is. As you can see from the rendering of the project, it, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful, modern Mediterranean design with articulation and a mix of finishes. You know, as, as envisioned by Plan Hermosa in, in this area. It's surrounded by single and multifamily homes built from the 1950s to the 1970s. With the exception of the building to the immediate south, which was built in 1989. The proposed design fits in with its neighbor and the traditional single, more traditional, single and fam- multifamily. Residences down the street. The project does meet all applicable zoning requirements for its lot. The existing driveway apron will be replaced by new sidewalk. And that will result in one added street parking space, which is a, a, a plus. There are currently some guy wires that will run over the new driveway. Uh, and to the extent that any reconfiguration of the wires is required. So Cal Edison has indicated that this can be accomplished. Uh, and as Ms. Emis noted, the applicants will be applying for an encroachment permit to landscape the green space between the new homes and, and Clark Field. Finally, uh, going from one unit to two units on the site. Creates additional housing that supports the city's housing stock target. The applicants request your approval of the project. They're here tonight to introduce themselves and say a few words. Jerry Compton, the architect, is also available for questions and I would yield to the Bergstresers.
Thank you, Brandon. Do we have the property owners ready to talk?
Carlos, are you promoting number?
Yes, that's Kyle, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think we just lost this connection. There we go, I think he's back. Kyle, can you hear us?
Oh, there we are. Hi, I'm Wendy and this is Kyle, my husband, Bergstreser. And then this is our little new baby, Kona. We're super excited to move towards the field and have a nice little green space to have our little son grow up in. It's a nice little area and community, so lots of families in the area and we're just excited.
Other comments that you'd like a mission to know at this time? None. Okay, they've, they've muted. Well, thank you for coming on. Carlos, do we have anyone else with a raised hand on this item? I see two hands raised, one, Mr. Compton, who I believe is the, I think we were just told he's the architect on this project.
That's correct, so I will go ahead and make that switch here to have Mr. Compton. Mr. Compton, can you hear us? Mr. Compton, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can.
Okay, you're welcome to address the commission.
Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure working with Kyle and Wendy on this project. They've been very hands-on. I think they're going to be great new members of the Hermosa Beach community. And their input to this project is extensive. The exterior treatments are, and the project itself is actually going to be built by Wendy's father, as, as I understand it. So this is going to be a, a, a very beautiful addition to Hermosa Beach. I'm glad they've been involved. If I have, if there are any other questions related to the design work, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. We will let you know if we have any questions on the design. Appreciate you being available to answer any questions.
No problem.
Okay. So let's see, Carlos, I do see Ron Newman with his hand raised.
That is correct, I will know.
I think you have to open public comment now, right, Pat?
Oh, thank you, you're right, you're right. Those were the applicants. I'm going to go ahead now and open public comment. If you care to weigh in on this matter, please press star six and star nine if you're on the phone. And or raise your virtual hand if you'd like to be heard on this matter, and thank you for that reminder, Melanie. Carlos, I do see that Ron Newman has his hand raised.
Yes, I'm trying to give him the. Rights to speak here. Okay, there we go, I think now he's going to connect. Ron, can you hear us? Might be a connection issue here, let me try one more time. Ron, can you hear us?
Yeah, no, I, I didn't have my hand up on this. I had it up on, on Kathy's deal, but some way it got messed up. So, um, go ahead without me on this.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
I can, thank, thank.
Yes, thank you, yes, thank.
Okay. I will do a last call. Any commenters on this item, please raise your virtual hand or press star six and star nine. Okay, I see no hands raised. Carlos, do we have anyone additional on the line?
Uh, no other ra- hands raised at this time.
Okay, hearing them, let's close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions and deliberation. Do I have anyone that'd like to kick us off on this item? Commissioner Seaman, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So often with these projects, we end up saying that it meets all the requirements and there's, it's kind of a, I don't want to use the word overstaffed, but everybody seems to perceive that at some point, that we're just approving this thing. But this does meet all the requirements. I like especially the fact that they positioned the driveway into a particular way to gain an extra space on the street. That's, I think, always a big plus. So it clearly shows that they put a lot of thought into the design of the building. I'm a little wondering how the Edison Company is going to handle those guide wires, because that's the end pole on the line, and of course, it offers tension of pulling away from the rest of the pole. But if they say they can do that, then I'm sure they have a way to do it. And so, I mean, it's fine with me if they can do it. That's great. I like the design of the building. They've met all the requirements for parking and height limitations inside yards and setbacks and so on. And I think it's a nice design. It's a beautiful building, so I have no problem with supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else caring to weigh in? Commissioner Isam?
Yes, thank you, Chair Rice. I agree with Commissioner Seaman. It is a good project. I do intend to support it. I do want to bring, just for the public record, attention on page four, third paragraph. So the applicant is proposing a thousand-square-foot encroachment to the north of the property closest to Clark Field. So technically, that's an encroachment onto city property. Is that correct? All right, and I assume that city property is not being used by the city actively? I mean, it's part of, on the other side of the fence of Clark Field, or what's the status of the property now?
So there's an existing retaining wall that they are proposing to keep, which I'm assuming that the previous owner has also used as an encroachment area. But in order to do additional plantings, they have to get the encroachment permit as part of the building permit.
That's fine. Thank you. I intend to support the project.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Isam, Commissioner, Vice Chair Peterson, cared to weigh in.
Yeah, I think it's a terrific project. I intend to support it. I appreciate their investment. And I intend to support them, the staff recommendation.
Very good. I sort of wrap up. We do these projects. They're not brought before us unless they do meet all the requirements. And as Commissioner Seaman first alluded to, it does meet all the requirements of lot coverage, minimums, height, maximums, setbacks, parking spaces on site, turning radius, et cetera. So this meets all the parameters, and generally, these are brought forward so that the neighborhood is advised, knows what's going on, and has a chance to weigh in on the project. I do want to support the positives on the project that we do. Parking is, it's all about parking, and we do pick up a street space, and we love when we see that. So thank you, Commissioner Seaman, for highlighting that, as well as I believe that there's going to be some sidewalk improvements as well. So I think there's some very nice gains. Thank you to Commissioner Isam for pointing out that this does have a large encroachment along the long side of the property as it is adjacent to the field. But having gone and looked at it and then having a different look that I was provided by staff, we see that there is that retaining wall that is existing. And so this property owner intends to beautify, and so we always like those investments in beautification and green space. So really appreciating that, noting that the project itself, the building itself, including ingress, egress, and satisfaction of all those requirements are within their property line. So we're not granting anything other than the opportunity for them to petition the Department of Public Works, which, because that piece is not in our purview, but they'll go to Public Works for that, to get that encroachment, to do that beautification. So with those notes, we welcome the Bergstreser family to Hermosa Beach, and I intend to support the project as well. Do we have anyone who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Seaman?
You can unmute yourself.
There you go.
Pardon me. I move to approve this project.
You have a motion? We have a second? Vice Chair? We have a motion. A second. Any further comment or deliberation on the, on the motion? Seeing none, Carlos, can you call, or Melanie?
I can go ahead and call. Commission, it's okay. Commissioner Seaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
He is recused.
That's right. And Commissioner Isam?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson?
Yes.
And Chair Rice?
Yes.
Motion carries. The resolution, the planning commission approved memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be in writing and submitted by 6:00 PM Monday, August 9, 2021, to the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Ken, have you reached out to Commissioner Hoffman to let him know to come back to the meeting? There he is. Welcome back, Commissioner. There he is. Okay, all right, let's move on to our next public hearing on this section of our meeting. This is a report 21-0443, and this is a CUP request that actually has been withdrawn. The notifications went out. This public hearing was noticed. We then were advised that the application has been withdrawn. I would like to go ahead and see if we do happen to have any public comment on this item, noting that no action will be taken. There is no CP in front of us, and wanted to see if we had anyone that wanted to weigh in. I see a hand raised.
Yes, Chair Rice, let me go ahead and give them the opportunity to address the commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Lombardo, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Chairperson Rice, members of the planning commission. I just wanted to introduce myself. My wife and I are the operators of the Hermosa Coastal Restaurant. We took over prior, just prior to COVID. Timing wasn't great. And during that time of cleaning up some of the previous CUP violations from the previous owner, we had worked with the city and had always intended on looking to expand our offerings to a full 47 license. We were under the impression that that was an option, although with COVID, it had delayed our application. And then we were informed recently that, I guess, we are in a zone, C1 zone, that apparently does not allow a full liquor license. And so I'd like to just note that, you know, I'd like to work with Director Robinson and look to perhaps modify or change that code, or perhaps be a part of a pilot program that would allow a family full-service restaurant, not a bar, to be able to serve alcohol and other offerings in that location. And appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo, for speaking to us tonight. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to weigh in on this matter?
Yeah, Chair Rice, not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Last call for anyone wanting to weigh in on this withdrawn CUP application. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. So noting that this application has been withdrawn, is there any action at this time that we need to take? Believe not, right?
No, there's not.
Okay. On to the next item. I work 21-0434, text 21-02, consideration of amendments to the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code regarding off-street parking in commercial zones and the determination that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. We have a couple of recommendations in front of us, and I believe a staff presentation, as well as one from our consultant Martha, and there she is. Welcome, Martha, back to Hermosa Beach and back to our planning commission meeting on this very important item, bringing to life our updated general plan. Welcome.
And thank you, Chair Rice. Martha and I are going to team up on this presentation. And so Carlos or Melanie, if you can start with the slides, I will start us off.
Sorry. Martha, do you have the slides up? I do have them up, but did you want to control them yourself? You're on mute.
I can. Let me open them.
I do have them up, though, and can jump into them and control them if you'd like.
Well, I will, I will start off Chair Rice. I appreciate your comments about how important this is as part of implementing Plan Hermosa. Next slide. So, you know, we, we know our goals of the zoning code amendment to implement a lot of aspects of Plan Hermosa. It's a big, comprehensive project that we are excited and we are working on. And of course, involves a lot more than what we're talking about tonight. But these targeted amendments are something we felt was very necessary to take some positive steps because of the issue of time, the importance related to economic vibrancy issues that were happening before the pandemic and I think have been exacerbated by the pandemic. So it's really important that we take some of these steps that can be more immediate in terms of the goals of revitalization, clear and understandable regulations, and again, especially economic vibrancy. And of course, one of our primary goals of Plan Hermosa for a pedestrian-oriented urban form, some of these parking provisions we have in our code now are just in major need of a fix. And so these targeted amendments are designed to be kind of a first step, something that could be easily approvable, things that are widely acceptable, to get something done and across the finish line. So we can show the business community, as well as our residential community, some progress. We do understand there is a desire for some more ambitious proposals, maybe some broader, comprehensive, progressive standards in the world of parking and zoning. But we really wanted to kind of catch up with some of the things we've talked about for years. Next slide. As you know, we've had a lot of conversations and studies regarding parking in addition to Plan Hermosa, the downtown core revitalization strategy, the parking management study, which included some recommended parking standards for the coastal zone, the recommendations in our zoning code assessment report. And so there's been a lot of input, and we've also had some prior meetings. Next slide, we've talked about this as going back to March of last year, and we came up with this idea of targeted requirements probably early this year, bringing it up to our Economic Development Stakeholders Group and the Economic Development Committee, and we have received some feedback. We and so outreach was very specific to some of these amendments, beginning with an assessment, discussion of options, refinements, and then drafting and kind of crystallizing the recommendations in the report you have in front of you tonight. Next slide. So through, through the process, questions have been raised about what the coastal commission thinks and how it will fit in with the coastal land use plan. So we have taken steps and are preparing to process a local coastal land use plan amendment on a parallel process. And we've had initial discussions with coastal staff. And the idea there is incorporate Plan Hermosa's mobility element in our certified land use plan. We think this can happen in a timely manner, and you know, in our process of working the coastal commissioner, with coastal commissioner over the last few years, we didn't have any outstanding issues with the policies and our mobility element, which also address these issues related to parking. So we are moving forward on that. So again, the main issues we're dealing with, I would characterize as taking away some of the barriers in our parking codes that are complicated, that are outdated. And as set forth in this staff report, address specifically adaptive reuse, supporting small establishments, addressing some of the outdoor dining issues. And per my previous point, especially related to flexibility, giving invest, people making investment decisions and development decisions, some alternatives, and not having such cumbersome parking requirements preventing progress or preventing the type of development, which I think would be mostly small-scale and acceptable and consistent with what we all want to see and consistent with Plan Hermosa. So at this point, I will pass it over to Martha, who will get into the details of the proposed amendments.
Thank you, and it's good to be back at this stage of this exercise that we're doing. And I'm going to summarize the amendments kind of by these categories that Ken described, and that should really look familiar to you, because these are the same topics that we've been discussing, as Ken said, as we started kind of with, you know, assessment and ideas to options, to getting feedback, to revising, kind of narrowing down to bring all of what we've observed and what we've heard into the actual language of the amendments. One thing you will notice is that the amendments related to residential development have been dropped out. And they're not on this. We used to have five topics that we were talking about. And really, just as Ken described, this effort is focused on getting something in place in the residential parking requirements. And any modifications to those were seen as something that really necessitated some additional discussion that could happen kind of at a later date, and we didn't want to hold up things that seem to have more widespread kind of consensus on. So the first topic is really about aimed at supporting reuse of existing buildings, retenanting or filling vacant structures, basically. The current requirements do allow a change of use from, to a more intensive use, and you need to provide parking, that additional parking that's required for that more intensive use. There is an exception in the downtown, which requires you to provide all required parking for restaurants under 5,000 square feet. That's just a caveat in your existing code. The proposed amendments have, what's proposed is to allow a change of use without without requiring that additional parking, as long as there's no change in the building square footage. The caveat to that would be that it does not apply to late night alcohol establishments. And that's in reaction to some of the feedback and some of the concerns we heard as we went through the process. So except for late night alcohol establishments in an existing building, you could have a change of use and that wouldn't trigger the need to provide additional parking. Because typically what you have, the site is built out, there is no room to provide additional parking. Coupled with that is an allowance for limited additions. So the proposed amendments would allow up to 10% with a minimum allowance of 500 square feet. But basically a 10% addition without triggering the need for additional parking. And this is really to recognize that some of the buildings may be old. They may not be up to code health department requirements, accessibility requirements. With the change of use, they might need an additional bathroom, additional storage. It's just to allow some flexibility, but the intent is to, for the most part, you're, you're taking, you're filling an existing building. Anything over that 10% addition would require additional parking, you know, for that addition. The caveat again here is that that would not apply to late night alcohol establishments. Late night alcohol establishments, again, in response to input that and concerns that we heard, they are, would need to provide all of the parking that's required. So they wouldn't qualify for either of these. The second grouping is really aimed at supporting small commercial establishments. And the concept is that you know, parking and meeting the parking requirements for small commercial spaces can be a burden to them. And one of the main things in Plan Hermosa was to support mom and pop kind of retail shops. So this is along with that. With the proposed amendments, there are some limits on, you know, we took that broader concept. We heard concerns about where it could be allowed and what limits should be put on. And so we incorporated limits into that. So it would apply to ground floor, non-residential uses only in the downtown and C1 districts. And those are really your pedestrian oriented districts intended to be walkable, intended where you would park once and, you know, visit a number of establishments. So it's limited to the downtown and C1 districts. And then it also does not apply to office or late night alcohol establishments. So some of that is from the feedback and the input we receive, but it also reflects Plan Hermosa, which in Plan Hermosa really talks about promoting the non-office development on the ground floors and really reserving the office development for upper stories. Yeah, again, some limitations put on in response to feedback that we heard and also in line with Plan Hermosa. The third grouping is onsite outdoor dining. And just to clarify, because I know Parklets is a conversation that the city is having as well. So this is separate from Parklets. So Parklets are in the right of way and that's under a separate city program. So this is onsite outdoor dining, which your current code allows the first 200 square feet of, your current code does not require parking for the first 200 square feet of outdoor dining. The proposed amendment would expand that and wouldn't require additional parking for the first 400 square feet of onsite outdoor dining. And that's in the instance that we know not everybody has that amount of space on their property to accommodate. So it's not, it may not work for everyone, but areas that do have that or places that do have that amount of area onsite, the first 400 square feet would not require parking. That would include rooftop dining. And then also allow that associated food establishment to provide the same service outdoor as it does indoor. So that includes alcohol and table service. And it's really recognizing that particularly post-COVID, but I think in general trends have been towards, you know, the indoor-outdoor experience and really having the same operation on, you know, in both areas. Then the fourth grouping is really around flexibility. And this, so right now you have process in your code of a parking plan, which requires review by the Planning Commission. And then that the Planning Commission can entertain some modifications to parking requirements and different things regarding parking. But then your code goes and has some very specific kind of codified limitations within the, within the parking plan allowances. And amendments are to remove those codified specific limitations where a parking plan is required, really allowing the Planning Commission to weigh the merits of the request through that public process, that discretionary process. And you're not bound then by default by these limits that are written into the code. And that's, and coupled with the topic of flexibility, just some things on flexibility of, you know, how parking is provided, the design of it. The proposed amendments include allowing tandem parking for employee parking and then also allowing valet parking pursuant to the approval of a parking plan. And again, that would be the opportunity for the Planning Commission with a public hearing to look at the merits of that and the operation of it and then make decision on the valet parking. So that's an overview of the amendments. I'll pass it back to Ken and he can fill in any holes that I missed and summarize the staff recommendation for the Planning Commission.
As the slide states, we are recommending that you adopt the attached resolution, which would recommend that the City Council adopt these code amendments. And I think I would like to note, and I don't know if Melanie wants to add to it at all. We provided some supplemental information that also has some information about the different commercial uses and the size of buildings in our commercial zones. So I hope you found that helpful. I would like that there's a caveat to that, understand that the, there are limits to that data. It comes from the County Assessors Office, so you might find some inconsistencies between what might be identified for a site as a store might be a restaurant. And I think it, it's just that the data that we source that from is not perfect. But I think the intent of that exhibit should still be helpful in seeing that kind of trends of how common these small lot situations are. But however, if you're concerned about the impacts of these actions, you know, some of these larger commercial projects would still have to provide their full complement of parking. We are really trying to focus on helping the smaller projects, the smaller buildings have more flexibility, again, to take away these barriers that are preventing investment. And we've been hearing that for years, well before the pandemic. So I, I guess just in a general view, I don't think there's a a lot to be afraid of in terms of where these code amendments might take us. I think they, there is, it's consistent with pretty much a practice through many communities throughout the state. And it's really just to move us into current times and how we deal with using our buildings and how parking requirements apply. So I think unless Melanie has something to add, we are available for questions. And I would encourage you also ask Martha questions with respect to her experience in working with a lot of other jurisdictions and kind of where they are in terms of some of these similar types of approaches to coastal, in coastal cities, especially older developed coastal cities like ours. So it's open for questions.
Sure, that, so that concludes staff report as well as our report and presentation from our consultant. So let me get my, oh, there's the feedback, I can see everybody. Oh, I already see vice chairs hand up. So let's move into commissioner, commissioner questions of staff, then we'll move. First, did you want to kick us off?
I can certainly, if you could cut out there for a second, I assume you're calling on me. A couple of questions, I guess, you know, I'll just throw it to staff, Martha and Ken and weigh in. The, the 5,000 square foot threshold as opposed to say 2,000, or I mean, give us, give us a sense of what 5,000 square feet looks like in our town or particular sites or whatever. Why, why that number? Anyone?
Martha?
Martha, do you have a response to that?
Well, I would say there, there really isn't any kind of magic in the number. The idea is to capture kind of a reasonable size, small establishment. We kind of started with 5,000 because that's a number you already have in your code that you've identified as a threshold for the restaurants in downtown of what, you know, that current 5,000 square foot threshold, kind of to delineate a kind of a smaller versus a larger. With that, I would say, just to clarify on some of the exhibits that you received that gave the square footages of commercial buildings in your commercial districts, those are your commercial districts citywide. So if you're thinking like, wow, this affects, you know, this broad kind of brush, it's actually much narrower than that in that it's really, what we're really looking at right now is your downtown and C1 district. The, the seating capacity of a restaurant of 5,000 square feet really depends on the operation of the restaurant, the type of service they do, the type of experience they're having. So there isn't really kind of a specific, you know, capacity that way. Ken or Melanie might have some examples of local restaurants that are of various sizes. You know, they had some examples before of outdoor dining. Where our footage is, but.
I appreciate your comments and I actually had the, I had this conversation with Melanie this afternoon. She was kind enough to answer my sort of, you know, fun moving questions, trying to wrap my head around this. I mean, it's, this is such a visual thing, so I would love to just walk through town and go like, like, you know, point at sites and see what could happen there. I mean, my sense can is that like, and I hate to mention specific restaurants, because, but I mean, like a restaurant, like a hook and plow, is that like a thousand square feet or like, I mean, like, is American junkie, is that 5,000 square feet or more or less? I mean, how? Give us a sense of the scale here.
Hook and plow is probably less than 2,000 square feet. But see if I can find American junkie on this list.
It would also be retail as well, and you can imagine that a retail space would need likely more space than our restaurant to be profitable. They often take up more space. So it's not just restaurants that you're thinking of.
Right.
But if you're just getting a sense of scale, yeah.
So like 5,000 square feet is 50 by 100. So that would be like 50 feet deep by 100 feet of storefront like that. I'm just trying to get a sense of scale, like what it looks like or.
Our lots are usually oriented the other way, where you have, let's say 50s, maybe 30 feet of storefront and 100 foot depth. So that's 3,000 square feet. So when you get to a case like American junkie. That's combining two 30 foot lots and it's, it looks like the number, at least in this database, is 4,640 square feet.
Okay, that, that gives me a sense of, and I hate to mention specific sites, because it implies that, or maybe makes the owners nervous that we're talking about their spite. We're not, I'm just trying to get a sense of kind of how big it looks.
But I think I just want to speak to that conceptually too. Just remember, the idea here is that and again, and talking about specific sites, if you take the law office across the street from City Hall here, Baker Burton and Lundie, that's, that's less than 5,000 square feet. If they decided they wanted to do a second story under their current codes, they'd have to provide the full complement of parking for the first floor and the second floor. Under this proposed code provision, they could convert the first floor to those to retail or restaurant, you know, ground floor active uses and provide and just have to provide parking for the square footage of the second floor. So it makes that type of investment decision possible. Under our current codes, it is frankly impossible without combining lots, you know, excavating a big hole for underground parking or something like that. And our code actually right now wouldn't even prevent someone from using the entire ground floor for parking. And I don't think visually that would make much sense at all. So this is a way of incentivizing the type of what we've been envisioning up on Upper Pier and other parts of downtown. In a way, in kind of a market sensitive way, not, not, not forcing it.
Okay. So this, this could enable retail first floor, office second floor, but it doesn't allow retail first floor, residential second floor, because that would be a zoning change, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, okay. I mean, those are my questions. I mean, there, there's a lot of pauses in here. I mean, my general sense is trying to, trying to understand how it plays out for a broad group of residents and, you know, how it looks over long term. I mean, we definitely get some, you know, enthusiastic comments from landowners, developers about our parking. And I hear that, but also, you know, we have to represent the public interest in terms of what, what the city looks like and not what, you know, maximizes or increases development. And that's really the hard thing for me. So if, you know, someone that owns a piece of land wants to relax parking restrictions so they can pull more, that may be better for the city, it's also more profitable for them. So is that progressive or is that just different? I don't know, those are, I sort of, like, you know, quote unquote, get paid to ask those questions. So that's what I'm always trying to wrap my head around in terms of what things look like and how it, you know, the look and feel to the average resident. So those are my questions for now. I, I appreciate your dealing with my quick little geometry quiz there in terms of square footage and I'll yield back to the chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. Sten, questions for staff?
Yes, probably for Ken. I, I agree with the targeted changes that we are considering here tonight. I think it's going to be a great thing for small businesses to, to be able to expand. And in the last several years, we've had several cases where of a restaurant or a use of a building that wanted to change use and there was just no way that, there's, there's, it's impossible to provide the parking that's required. And, and this seems to solve that problem considerably, much in the same way that the gentleman earlier from two, two brothers described the possibility of building things and then just not being able to provide the parking anywhere. And I, I think this, this solves that problem quite nicely. And, and I fully agree with it, and it should stimulate business and development and reuse and everything that's mentioned in these reports. But the next question that I have, and perhaps it's an unintended consequence is as we, as this development and reuse starts to take effect, including outdoor dining and roof decks and so on and so forth, it's going to be attracting more people. That's the idea of doing this, which is wonderful. It's going to be attracting more people. That's the idea of doing this, which is wonderful. But it's going to actually also be attracting more cars. And and so my concern is is that this. These extra cars will perhaps be forced to start seeking parking in the surrounding neighborhoods, at least for a while. Until something else can be done, which brings me to my question. One of the documents that was given with this report was the parking plan or mostly downtown parking plan. When do we have any idea about when that might be? Begun and most specifically, I know there were, I think there were 10 suggestions. The 10th one being to provide more parking in the various lots that we have around town by building some sort of. Structure rather than an empty one level parking lot. So do we have an idea when those lots might be built and these and the other recommendations take place to sort of alleviate the increased number of cars that will have. Being parked in Hermosa?
I can speak to that generally, but my first comment would be. I think it's debatable whether this kind of stuff is necessarily necessarily going to increase the number of cars. You are correct. The goal is more vibrancy. But the idea is, under this district parking kind of concept, park once concept. People are going to. Come and visit multiple destinations, not necessarily bring more people here to park. We also are going to have. You know, through a lot of our other mobility efforts, and you already see it, the larger number of people using bicycles, personal mobility devices. You know, other ways of getting to these destinations. But despite that, in terms of the parking management strategies, it includes parking supply is one of them, but the primary ones that we are taking on now. Are more related to like mobile pay options. Better signage, you know, just increasing the awareness of people coming into town where there is available to park, increasing the efficiency of our parking supplies. Encouraging shared parking, you know, maximizing the use of our parking resources as to wait a way to balance that equation. And these are all tried and true strategies that are used in coastal communities. And I think we all are aware that we could do a lot better with those types of strategies in terms of increasing efficiencies. But those are the things we're tackling now from the parking management strategy, the tougher ones. And I think if you look at the strategy, we characterize things in terms of. You know, costs and that, you know, how you get there, the parking supply questions, of course, are. Greater costs and harder to achieve. But we do still, we do have some locations in town where we can add supply.
But there's no clear idea about when that might actually happen.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that seems to be to me to be somewhat of a problem, although I don't see it as a. A reason not to think this is a great idea and that we shouldn't approve it. But it just seems to me that, you know, we were taking baby steps, but we've only taken the one step and we need to take the next step. And and I believe that that, you know, I this idea of riding a bicycle. To go out to dinner or shopping is a great idea for the residents, but you know, if you live up on the hill. Or north Hermosa, even south Hermosa, and you want to go to dinner downtown, not everybody can ride a bicycle. In fact, very few people can are willing to take. Family out on bicycles to go to dinner. I think what part of what we're doing here is these restaurants that are that we're encouraging to come here. I believe we should encourage them to come here and I I welcome that idea and that concept. But when we encourage them to come here, they're going to be wanting to expand their facility. With roof deck dining or outdoor dining or larger dining rooms in general, hoping to attract people from other cities. And no one's going to ride a bicycle from Pasadena to come here to have dinner or even Redondo or Torrance or Hawthorne. To 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 ride a scooter or bicycle here. That's that's kind of silly. I don't think they're going to take a bus either. My own family, when we want to go out to dinner and and somebody goes, well, where should we go? Well, how about down in Redondo? They got a lot of restaurants down there. We go there or we go here or how about Manhattan Beach or how about Hermosa? Whatever, those people join together and they meet and they 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 drive in cars to get to those places to eat dinner. And and so, you know, the increased use of bicycles doesn't seem to me to be. A reasonable offset for the number of cars that we are attracting. And so that's that's my comment. Again, I I fully agree with these targeted changes. I. I plan to support them, but I'm just curious about, you know, what we're going to do about the extra cars that we will be attracting.
And then, thank you. Real briefly, oh, sorry about that, Commissioner Seaman. Are you all done?
Yes.
Perfect. I just want to make sure that we open it up to public comment before we get too too in depth. And that way we could get that out of the way.
No, I understand and I appreciate that. I was just matter of my question to Ken about the timing of the parking plan. So, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Isam, do you have any questions of staff at this time on any of the documents, underlying information, the presentation? For the proposed changes to our ordinances?
I do not, Chairman Rice.
No questions?
No questions. Such a well-written document.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner Hoffman.
You know what, Chair, I do have some questions, but they're very specific to the language in the proposed. Ordinance that we would be sending or the the resolution we'd be sending to the council. So maybe it makes sense to address those after we've talked more generally. And I've got some general comments to make too, but I'll wait until after the public input.
Okay. I I think given that that I'll just ask a couple myself and then we'll go ahead and open public comment. And thank you to my colleagues for the questions that you did ask. And so in terms of all the underlying documents, we do appreciate those. I believe Commissioner Hoffman and I sort of gave out a list of some data that we were looking for so that we could. Base our decision making on the current snapshot of who we are now. And then look towards these parking amendments as where is does it get us where where we where we want to go. So with that, my questions. At this point are about the economic market update. And I just wanted to be clear. We did see some differences in the mapping. I had a bunch of questions about the source of the maps we were provided with. There is. A supplemental attached, which was the commercial properties by use in the city of Hermosa Beach. And it showed us the uses and I thought that was an important thing to have. So we have a snapshot of what it is. And then the second supplemental or the attachment was. The the square footage. When I compared those to what we had in the economic market update. I saw a lot of, you know, different nomenclature and in fact, some of the mapping on the maps. The designations provided on the maps by the by city staff, you know, represented what we know to be restaurants as stores or retail or other. And I know that. Ken alluded to the fact that the source for that information is county tax assessor. Can anyone, and maybe this is for Melanie. Can we, can anybody talk to us about what the data source was in the Hermosa Beach Economic Market Study Update, specifically that figure six? On page 30 of the report, but I think it's. Page. In our in our document here, it was that big beautiful is figure six. So page 30 of that report.
Yeah, I can speak a little to that. So that map was created by our consultant. And they use the data source from CoStar, which is a real estate database that the city doesn't have access to.
Is.
In our GIS system.
Okay, so. So the database that we're looking at for this mapping through GIS came from the county assessor's office. And that would be predicated on how the business is self-reporting it is reporting itself and that we are collecting that data. Is that right?
And that's how that's how I understand it. And that's what drives our GIS system. Like, that's what she uses to create maps.
Okay, and so for the CoStar, Ken, can you speak to, I mean. This seems much more representative of the actual snapshot, just for example, of what I know is there versus what we were shown on these other. And so I think it's important to understand where we are now. So we know where where we're trying to get with the goals that are outlined, not only in Plan Hermosa, but also. Some of the recommendations on all the underlying market reports that we've had. So is there any reason that we couldn't get this CoStar information and be able to manipulate it? And for example, you know, answer. Et cetera. And then when we look at expanding by 500 feet, like what would that look like? So is that an option for us? To get additional additional resourcing?
Yes. And Melanie and I were talking about that today, and we do think we can reach out to our consultant, even though they've kind of completed their assignment and try to. Get kind of a more full picture of the kind of the granularity of your data and how we can use it. I do agree with you. It's more current. The tax assessor data is. I don't know if it's because it. You know, the types of uses were reported so long ago or they use a different whole system of how they categorize uses. It's not as useful to us. So we can sort through that and try to. Clean up clean that data up to make it more useful. We could certainly do some more ground truthing ourselves. Not that difficult to do in our city.
Okay. In terms of then this market report that was just run and and obviously during COVID and has a lot of references to that. And Martha, I'm sure I'm hoping that you're familiar with this document. How do you see in general the policies that you've provided that are provided before us tonight? How do you see those delivering? The recommendations from that market report, which to be specific are a more diverse retail. We have and and sort of leaning away from maybe a restaurant use, which I understand is a retail use. But we have what's sort of like, we know where we want to go, but we're not sure how we get there. And I think if, you know, if I had any hesitation, that that might be it, wanting to make sure that any amendments we do. Get us to where we're trying to trying to go. So how do you see the proposed amendments? Supporting the drive towards some pretty specific recommendations about retail sectors like women's apparel. Sort of a fine dining, women's apparel, home garden. I even saw some automotive stuff in there. Versus sort of the the saturation that we seem to feel again about, you know, the restaurant use.
Well, you know, you can't through the zoning, you can't be so specific of where, you know, this would apply to women's retail and. And not other, but what it does is by being more flexible. And being through a more kind of streamlined process. It opens the door to. A wider range of of possibilities. And anytime what I see in land use. The more complex restrictive, the longer a process is. The ones that survive that are the ones that have are large corporations that have deep pockets. You know, a mom and pop retail store or a specialty retail store typically does not have the. You know, the financial backing to tear out some existing landscaping or something and put in. Tens of thousands of dollars worth of site improvements for parking. They don't have the time to negotiate. They can't hold an empty. A lease for an empty building for the two, three, four, however many months it is to go through a public hearing process. To request a parking exception. So by making some of these. Allowances just written into the code and straightforward, you're enabling the, you know, the. The smaller businesses without that deep financial backing, the the opportunity to move in. I I'm not an economic expert, so I can't really kind of. Expand on kind of more than that or give you the scientific. Data points for it. But my observations through land use is. You know, to allow flexibility kind of opens it up so that there's more potential for people again without the. The deep financial backing to. To make a go at it. And those are typically those kind of off. Retail things or specialty or somebody is trying something out, small businesses, family operations and so on. So. And I think like Ken said in the introduction, this. This may, so on the one hand, these are big things to do, right? They will very much make a difference to individual businesses and and property owners. Because it will make the difference between whether something can happen or it can't happen. Can I move my business in in here or not? At the same time, they're not so big and widely applicable that I I don't think they're going to fundamentally change. In and on themselves. I don't think they're going to fundamentally change Hermosa Beach. So it's hard to say, I I hate to say that because on the one hand, I want to say these are really great. You should do them. They're very important, but at the same time, I want to put it into perspective. You know, they're. On the one hand, groundbreaking, but at the same time, they're not. Totally groundbreaking. I would also say to, we do take our direction from Plan Hermosa, which we look at as. The community's voice and what the community wants to see for the future. So while we recognize that some changes. May benefit certain property owners or developers, that's really not the the impetus behind it. It's really about what is Plan Hermosa say? What did it say about the vision for the community? It talks about vibrancy. It talks about what walkable districts. It talks about an active streetscape, particularly near downtown, your neighborhood, commercial areas. And Ken's exactly right. There's places where. Sure, you could provide the parking, but you kind of actually don't want to when it results in the first two, one or two floors of. You know, that whole site is taken up either by surface or structured parking. It's not really that active streetscape in your. Core districts that, again, as we look at Plan Hermosa and what is the vision for the community? You know, what what does that look like collectively?
Okay.
Sorry, maybe I expanded on your question.
I I appreciated all of that. For Ken, we we have this overview of the total sizes of our commercial properties. Can you just give us a quick, I mean, I we. I didn't hand count, but if you were to make an estimate of what percentage of our commercial properties are. Between, you know, 5,000 or less, what what's your estimation of that? Where would we find that in? What's your estimation? So we can point that out as we talk our way through these things. How much of this is is affected? How many prop, how many pieces of property are affected?
Yeah, if you could. I can get back to you on that, you know, just in the next few minutes or so, if you can just give me some time to take a closer look at the exhibits and. And maybe Melanie has some insight as well, but I. I'd rather not just jump into that response to that right now.
Sure, not not a problem. And that'll that'll be helpful as as we move on. Martha, back to you. Part of what we discussed in our previous meetings with you. Is that. We, you know, we can look at these parking amendments and it's been presented to us. It's at this 5,000 mark. And as you shared with the vice chair, we took that number because that's that was sort of. A point that already existed in our code as something sort of like 5,000 or less is smaller and anything above that is some larger pieces. So in. In the hopes of promoting this adaptive reuse, right, we're we're saying you can keep, you know, that that was a very big. Part of our vision specifically for for our downtown. Some of the other things that we discussed are, we can sort of look at districts, right? I mean, and sort of we wanted to narrow cast some of these changes. We could. I mean, and sort of we wanted to narrow cast some of these changes we could so. And in fact, we could also look at maybe different square footages, right? So this is the recommendation based on something that already exists on our code as a delineator. Hopefully Ken is going to come back and tell us what percentage, because just sort of by a look at it, what I asked for a quick look at 3,000 or less, because 5,000, you know, this is Hermosa, so that sounds sort of big. And so there wasn't a whole lot of change between things that top out at 3,000 and then going all the way to 5,000. So my takeaway is most of our commercial spaces are 5,000 or less. So that is what prompted the question about footage, that is an option we can take with, you know, data supporting that. Or we could look at different, you know, the different districts. Am I, am I right about that? Getting a nod, you're muted.
Yes. So, so we already narrowed down the districts for that. And that's just the downtown and the C1, your neighborhood, commercial with the sizes. So what some places would do actually would actually say they could say like all of our ground floor, non-residential. The thing I would just say is if you're deciding between 5,000 and 3,000, if it seems like, well, 90% of the property seems 5,000 and 85% are 3,000. If you go with that lower number, you have this like group and they're like, hey, well, I'm only 500 square feet more, you know, wherever you draw that number, there, there's going to be that. But if, yeah, so that's just, I guess, something to, to think about. Again, there, I wish I could give you a magic number and, you know, put in all the data and spit something out for, for you, but but yeah, there's always kind of that how much you want to capture.
Okay. And then again, just for purposes of clarity for anybody watching, listening or participating, if we again, look at the two attachments, commercial properties by use and then the total building size. Can someone just state what commercial zoning are we looking at on, on these? So the, these are the areas and the properties that would be affected if we move forward with the ordinance as proposed tonight? If it's 5,000 or less. So it's not every single thing, but can we talk about these are all C1, everything on here is C1, and then the downtown, is that right?
On the maps, it was all commercial districts, so C1, C2, C3, the downtown district, the specific plan 11, specific plan seven and eight. All of the commercial districts.
So that, that's sort of my question, right? So this is to, what we're looking at is total. But in fact, the proposed changes are only for the C1 and the downtown.
Right. For the, for that exempting the small commercial establishment. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Ken, did you have an answer? You can, and you can, Ethan, we can, we can move to public comment then if I see, if I, is there any other commissioner questions of staff at this time, assuming there may be some after we hear some public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I'm, I'd like to go ahead and open us up for public comment. If you would like to weigh in, please, if you're on the Zoom, please raise your virtual hand. And we'd be called on, press star six and star nine. Please state your name and knowing that you have three minutes to comment on the item for us. So Carlos?
Yes, Chair, we do have hands raised. We will start with Ed Hart. Ed, can you hear us? Reminder to unmute, Ed. And you're also welcome to turn on the video.
Is it working?
Yes, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. First, want to thank all of you. Want to thank you for your time and service to our community. Few things. First, Commissioner Peterson. So earlier today, there was, there was a young family that they have a residential R1 and they want to make it into two. And, and they got your blessings and nobody said that you guys are going to be making money from it, even though they will be making money from it. So I never really appreciate whenever you bring up the fact that people make money, people do. So that's one for that. But that's maybe my thing. So second thing about Commissioner Bob. Drought resistant plants. A city adopted drought resistant plants because we are in drought. So the answer to your question, all we really have to do bring businesses that do not need parking. Restaurants don't need parkings. We just found out in, in the past year that people come walking with their bikes, with Uber and such, they don't really need parking. Offices do need parking. Salons do need parkings because people don't like to go, you know, don't like to get on their bike and get their hair done and get on their bike and go home. So the redo and we can use the whole idea of drought resistant and we could use parking resistant type of businesses. And also, please do not discount the fact that entrepreneurs that want to come to this city, they would know that we have parking or not. And so they make a distinction and they make a choice to come into Hermosa Beach regardless of parking. And you know what? If they don't make it, it's their problem, is their responsibility, not city's responsibility. And the last thing is parking requirement doesn't really create parking. Parking requirement just stops businesses from going forward and it stops investment. And lastly, Commissioner Rice, we know, what we don't know is where we going. We know we don't want to be bar, we don't want to be bar scene. But where we really want to be going, as you know, but we haven't been explaining that, is that we want to be a city that relies on walking, bikes and mobility. And that is having less parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your comments, Carlos. I see some more hands raised.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Let me just make a couple of switches here. And we will continue. Next, we will invite Brian Dunn. Brian, can you hear us? A reminder to unmute and turn on a video if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's been a very informative meeting and I'm with the Board of Directors of the Hermosa Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I joined about two years ago. And one of the things I did last year was go from the 190th and Anita along Pacific Coast Highway all the way up to the community center and on an Excel spreadsheet divided into east and west blocks. I laid out every retail store along the road. Well, first of all, it was the number of the, the address of the tenant. Then it was the tenant's name, then the usage, and then I would also put in the property owner's name. And I did this all the way along PCH up to the community center and I submitted it to Maureen Hunt over there when she was president of the chamber. And I also sent a copy to Christie Teague over at Planning Commission. And I just did the same thing for Aviation Boulevard, all the way from PCH up to Harper. And every retail, ground floor retail, I didn't do second floors, but ground floor retail. So, you know, it can be done and, you know, CoStar does a great job, but, you know, this was actually me going along on my electric bike and making sure I got every tenant along the way. One other thing I'd like to add is as far as parking for Hermosa Beach. You know, I enjoy going to Manhattan Beach and Metlocks Plaza and seeing what that means to all the retails along Manhattan Beach Boulevard, parking for the customers and they just walk down. I would really suggest that the city seriously look at a public-private development agreement with some entity to redo the community center property. I could think you could put a full subterranean, one-story parking area there that could feed all of the retail, Pier Avenue, even down to Hermosa, up to Aviation. I feel the property is being underused right now and it's like, I believe, 203,000 square feet of land. Build something like the Metlocks Plaza there, put in a hotel, put in retail, put in offices, medical, whatever it might be. Move City Hall there, move the fire department there. You've got just so many spaces for parking. So I thank you very much for the time and I appreciate you asking me to make my comments. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Carlos, shall we move on? I see some more hands raised. I see Ron Newman.
Yes, correct. Let me go ahead and get Ron the ability to address the commission. Ron, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Every one of these are very different. So anyways, commission, I just want to kind of agree with what Brian has to say. I also want to mention that, you know, if you look at Manhattan Mall or any of these other places, restaurants are what kind of drives the traffic. I'm not talking about late night bars. You take a place like Palmyra, you're saying that you can't expand an operation like that because it happens to have a late night license, but yet it's a full restaurant. So that's one thing I want to mention. It is, and as far as outdoor dining, outdoor dining is the way that the world is going. It's what everybody wants. It's healthy, it's fresh, it's people watching. And even now, you never know when things have changed. All of a sudden we have to have masks. So, and as far as, as far as lobby, as far as cars and, yeah, between Uber and, and, and a lot of places are using the weekend trolleys. Redondo Manhattan is taking a look at it. I also want to mention that unless we make some major changes, our changing demographics, demographics or, or the type of new people, young professionals that are moving in to Hermosa Beach, they can't find what they want that we have to offer. So most of them that I know of shop in Manhattan Beach. Because we haven't given our area a chance to get out of the past. Because we operate out of fear. And some of the people running our cities operate out of fear. We have to learn to take a chance and will adjust as we go along like we do in all businesses. The city has so much power that they could give us all kinds of things that we could do and still stop any problem people. Let's, we've been all working on this for a long, long time with a lot of good heads from, from, from Ken's group and the, our economic group. And unless we get on with this right now, we're going to be an old sleepy village. This is gonna, like they say, without a vision, the people will perish. And we have not had a vision so far. So anyways, thank you for listening. Bye.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, I will make a change here and we will now invite John Davis to address the commission. John, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, I'm going to turn on video if you'd like.
Oh, no, it's okay. You don't want to see. Anyhow, I just, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I appreciate all the hard work that, that Ken and staff did. I appreciate that you, as Planning Commissioner, are listening openly. I absolutely want to support what staff has written. I think it's forward looking. I think it offers significant steps towards achieving the goals in Plan Hermosa, which are really to build a pedestrian bike oriented city with more place making, second stories and increased vibrancy. You know, parking reform is absolutely the cornerstone to achieving our goals of Plan Hermosa, in my opinion. Without substantial parking reform, the vision will never happen. You know, I've been in Hermosa for a long time. I've watched businesses fail over parking issues. I've seen them fail to open over parking issues. I've seen poorly designed developments and underdeveloped properties, all because of parking. And I've seen our downtown stagnant, stagnate because of this issue. I've been in Hermosa for 50 years, so I've seen a lot of it. And another thing to consider is that, and I don't know how educated everybody is on this, but there's a lot of literature that says our off part, off part, off-site parking actually hurt our environment. They're counterproductive to our goal of living streets because they incentivize and encourage driving cars. You know, cities that reduce off-site minimums actually reduce car usage. There's quite a few studies that show that they actually increase vibrancy, sales, retail goes up. I'm happy to share any documents that you want, so please feel free to reach back out to me. I, I know the proposal is drastic, especially considering where we're at right now. I don't see this draft drastic, but I know it's a drastic departure. However, I think, you know, this tendency away from parking minimums, it's really the future and it reflects the future of mobility of towns like ours. And if I remember correctly, Plan Hermosa, it really specifically says, we're not supposed to look at where, I'll overweight the impact of today, we need to build for tomorrow. I'm paraphrasing it, but that's what it says. You know, cities like San Jose, Fresno, San Diego, Lancaster, Temecula, they've all decided design around people and not cars and they've abandoned their parking requirements. Even Manhattan Beach, our nearest neighbor there, who I think is quite successful economically, they've actually eliminated parking requirements for all buildings under 10,000 feet. So I don't feel like staff's recommendation of 5,000 is, is a very drastic thing. I think it's really the minimum we should do and I can, I won't have enough time to explain all that. The parking apocalypse that may be concerned, it's not logical because commercial leases are 10 years. And the makeup of our commercial property owners is really generational holders. So if anything, we need not to worry about it. We actually have to incentivize some kind of improvement of our city. So I, can I speak a little bit more? Or am I out of time?
Your time is up, Mr. Davis.
Okay, if I can just say one, one last thing, I just want to just consider that the, in my, the unintended consequences of not going far enough with this is worse than going far enough. The worst thing that happens is we stay the same and we are, continue to decline our economy. So thank you so much. I really appreciate and great job, staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Carlos, can we have, I see a hand raised and a phone number, but no name, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct. A reminder to press star six to unmute yourself. When instructed to do so. So this is going to be phone number ending in four, five, one. Again, that's phone number ending in four, five, one. Please state your name and address the commission. Phone number four, five, one. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Jonathan Wicks. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to commend Martha Miller and her work and staff. As a fellow parking consultant at Walker Consultants, you know, she's well regarded in the industry, especially by my boss, Stefan Turup. So special thank you to you, Martha, for the work that you've done. And to staff, I'm in full support of the proposed changes to the parking code that are under consideration tonight. I think it's, it's, it's the right step. It's a step in the right direction. It's not everything that needs to be done in order to achieve our goals in the city, but it is a positive step in the right direction. So thank you for what you've been able to do so far. In regard to Commissioner Seaman's comment on adding structured parking, I believe he's referring to the coastal zone parking management study. And if you look at table 5.1 recommendations on page 52 of that report. Adding structured parking is actually the, the last, the 12th recommendation. Revising the zoning code is the seventh recommendation. There are six other recommendations ahead of it. So I'm looking forward to the changes that are coming to our parking code. And, you know, just one final thought and comment, if, if parking supply truly was a concern of city staff and the commission. You could address that tomorrow by enforcing existing municipal code that is currently on the books in Hermosa Beach. So I'll direct you to Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Section 17.44.050. Unlawful to reduce available parking. And I'll just summarize that here quickly. An owner or user of real property containing uses for which off-street parking facilities or areas are required, which includes residential parking by this chapter, shall be prohibited from the following. Reducing, diminishing, or eliminating existing required off-street parking facilities or areas under the ownership or control of such owner or user. And paragraph B, selling, transferring, leasing, or otherwise making unavailable for such required off-street parking facilities or area. Any portion of said lot. So again, I'll ask the commission, when was the last time that code enforcement issued a citation to a single family home for a violation of existing Hermosa Beach Municipal Parking Code? Thank you and thank you for your time and all of your effort.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. I see one more hand raised, phone number ending in nine, six, three.
Phone number ending in nine, six, three. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address the commission. You'll have three minutes.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Hi, my name is Dino Capaldi and I own the building at 423 and 425 Pier Avenue. Currently it's hook and plow and Locksmith, Hermosa Lock and Safe. Years before that, I had a restaurant called Bonavita. And I tried to expand Bonavita into the space which was 423. Hook and Plow is about 1,200 square feet and Frank Spot, Hermosa Lock and Safe is about 800 square feet. So by, by doing that, they required me, I think there was two or three existing spots back there. They required me to have five spots. And I think I had a couple of options, find some, find somebody that would, you know, tie up their property for me to park cars there or pay in lieu parking fees, which I think was a little north of 20 grand. So it was about a hundred thousand dollars in parking fees. And it was just all about parking. It seems like it's all about parking. So you know, ultimately I just, I declined to expand my restaurant and I ultimately gave up the restaurant. And I really think that this is a step in the right direction, without a doubt. By easing some of those restrictions, you're going to see a lot more development, a lot more beautification, a lot more new businesses coming in. And I, if you look at Pier Avenue, yeah, as people come down, there's like kind of main artery as you come down to Hermosa Beach and it would be really nice to be able to really make that place magical. And I think by doing this, by allowing business to breathe a little bit and expand their, their, whether it's a restaurant or retail and beautiful, making more, more, much more charming, you're going to see a lot more people coming down there. And I really strongly, strongly agree with the planning commission on allowing to these ease of restrictions. So I really, really support the staff's recommended ordinance and I hope that it goes through. I think you'll see a lot of really vibrant atmosphere down there. Thank you very much for allowing to speak and have a good evening. Good night.
Thank you. And Carlos, I see one more hand raised.
Yes.
Caller we just had.
Yes, the caller we just had. And the next person we would like to invite is Laura Penya. Laura, can you hear us? Laura, can you hear us? A reminder to unmute yourself. And you're welcome to turn on your camera if you'd like.
Hi, this is Laura Penya. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I want to thank the planning commission and staff for this opportunity to provide feedback. I ask that you be mindful of the innovative and forward thinking approaches for anticipating future lifestyles, transportation trends, and the catalyst for innovation that is so clearly stated in Plant Hermosa. The proposed parking amendments provided by staff are a step in making that happen. As of last Friday, I bought and rode my first e-bike through our city and traveled to Manhattan and Redondo. Now, for many of you who remember when you first used the internet, the ride was truly transformational. As one of the most outspoken business owners in our community who has advocated for more parking. It was jarring to realize that Professor Don Schu, a well-respected expert on parking was correct. Off-street parking requirements are ill-advised because they directly subsidize cars. They increase our dependency. The cost is transferred to tenants and customers, thereby increasing prices on goods and services. Off-street parking takes away valuable space from the public. And there's a flood of research that has shown that parking requirements increase congestion, raise housing costs, degrade urban design, and prevent walkability. It's the exact opposite of Plant Hermosa. Instead, he proposes price on-street parking that matches demand with supply and keep a few spaces vacant rather than require off-street parking. When I further explored the proposed parking amendments for their plant Hermosa. I considered Goal 1.6, long-term consideration. Let's prioritize decisions that provide long-term community benefit and discourage short-term community benefit. Instead of looking at the land use section where it says first floor retail restaurants and other sales tax generation commercial uses. If buildings that have one story, like our law office down the street, which is roughly 4,000 feet and Realtor's office, they cannot develop because they are not incentivized to move off the ground floor or cannot due to code. We are working against the vision of Plant Hermosa. If we're trying to encourage office to move up to the upper levels, we need to modify the amendment so it allows the exclusion of the first 5,000 feet, not limited only by the first floor, provided the ground floor is non-office and non-residential. In addition, Goal 2.8, youth participation. Let's encourage and incorporate the viewpoints and the ideas of our youth. Over 52% of people in the United States and 63% of millennials would like to live in a place where they do not need a car very often. These trends are towards ride sharing, biking, and other modes of transportation. And also Goal 5.6, that assist our community property owners to revitalize and rehab their structures. Provide in special incentives so that we can do an equivalence of four biking spaces for one car space. If we are looking for examples for other cities that are already doing this, like San Francisco, Buffalo, and Hartford, Connecticut, they have gotten rid of all parking requirements. So I ask you, please look at the emphasis on flexibility, like Martha Miller was saying, use tandem, valet parking. I do believe these amendments will not be the end-all-be-all, but it's the beginning. And we need to have a multi-tiered approach to parking that increases wayfinding and signage. On-demand payment, drop-off ride sharing, and improve bike lane visibility, and please, more bike parking. But with regards to planning decisions, this is a crucial and important step that will set the tone as we prepare our city for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. I don't see any additional hands raised on our panelists. So can we go ahead and see if we have any caller listening that would like to weigh in on this matter?
Yes, not seeing any other hands raised or callers on the line wishing to address the commission.
Last call for anyone wishing to make a comment on this item. Okay, hearing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for follow-up questions and deliberation. Who would like to kick us off? Commissioner Hoffman, there you go. Oh, Ken, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I just, I, I do have a response to your earlier question. Less than perfect science, I must admit, but in terms of in the C2 downtown area, it's approximately about two-thirds of like our existing building supply is in less than 5,000 square feet. I think that speaks to what we all kind of know anecdotally, that it's mostly smaller buildings. And in the C1 zone, it's nearly 100% in terms of those kind of smaller footprint buildings that exist now. So if that was your question, that's kind of the sense I get from the data we have.
So C1 basically 100% or 5,000 or less?
Yeah.
And did you say the C2 is about two, roughly?
About two-thirds, yeah.
Very well. Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner, Commissioner Hoffman, would you like to tee us off with any follow-up questions of staff or any thoughts for us as we move through the proposed amendments?
Yeah, let me just make some general comments and respond a little bit. And it's interesting, Ken's comments. As you guys know, when we got that second set of data this morning, basically showing 3,000 versus 5,000 and so forth. I tried to do sort of as Ken did on the fly, a sort of an analysis. It makes no difference. The number of establishments in town that are in that, in between, it's hardly any. And in those particular zones, the, you know, going from 5,000 to 3,000 or from 3,000 to 5, it's really a nominal increase. The other part of this, though, that I looked at was what percentage of those, and again, using the color coordinated in the data, we've already talked about the limitations. I kind of did a sample of how many buildings really could, or would be incentivized to go to a higher density. And so if you take out all the restaurants, they're, they're already there, so there's no incentive for them. But if you take all of the non-restaurant uses, it's like 75% of all those buildings or all those establishments that presumably could. But when you look at it, and go back to the parking code. What the, if you're, and I'm assuming that these are retailer office or whatever. To go, restaurants basically the only likely intensification that would occur. And so when, when all is said and done, I think it was Mr. Davis that said today, you know, don't think about this as a drastic change. I, I don't think it is a drastic change. When you actually do the math and look at what this might incentivize to do. It's, it's, I think it's much more, and I'll be honest, when I first got this on Thursday and started looking at this, I was somewhat traumatized by, maybe these are dramatic changes, but when you start to really go through it, think about what it means to go to a more intensive use in terms of parking requirements. There aren't, you know, I, I don't think we're going to end up being pill hill with everybody converting to medical offices. Certainly not small-scale ones like that. And so it's really, how many people are going to look at this as an opportunity to convert to a restaurant or to an expanded dimension that we had earlier here. Dino was talking about hook and plow. Well, yeah, hook and plow, I'm sure would love to have been able to take that adjacent space and expand that, but we've already precluded late night. And I'm not sure that there's, in other words, when all is said and done here, I, I share Rob's concern. That at some, there is a reality here. And that reality includes the fact that virtually everybody who lives in Hermosa Beach works outside of Hermosa Beach. And the reality that those of us who do don't really have viable alternatives. It's very difficult for most of us to identify an efficient, effective way that we could take public transportation to our workplace outside of Hermosa Beach. And so we are going to have cars and certainly that residential parking element is going to remain critical. On the other hand, both Rob and I are in a position, ideally soon, we can walk down to, to hook and plow on Pier. So we're not going to park when we go there and we're twice as big or we're of what, again, we don't want to go through and use specific examples. I, I, I don't see this as particularly threatening. Conversely, it's interesting, Mr. Nolan sort of started us off today. I can't imagine how what we're talking about tonight will really incentivize him or allow him to do much of anything, frankly. To kind of, you know, he's got an assemblage of lots that he could, I don't think this affects much of that when we're keeping it at 5,000 square feet and smaller. And so I, I don't know, I guess, I'll be honest, I guess what, not fearful. It's funny, I'm listening to Laura talk about the chupistas and all of that. It's not like this is new material to most of us. I, I, I think we've kind of gone through that. I think we also appreciate that a lot of those comments and smart growth and new urbanism and so forth are relevant to cities that have nothing in common with Hermosa Beach. We are in fact the goal that they're trying to get to, as opposed to someplace that we need to go. So I, I, I guess I'm less traumatized by all of this than, than than maybe we might have been initially. I think the question that Chair Rice proposed earlier. You know, what's this going to incentivize to do? I, I don't think it's going to be a lot, frankly. And as was mentioned by one of our speakers also. The market's going to dictate what makes sense to do. And I have a feeling that there will be some conversions. Mr. Newman talked about, I'm sure Ron, and I mean, we all know at one time wanted to expand his business into the adjacent space. He's going to be precluded by the ordinance as it's written as a late night establishment. We can think about that down the road once we see what this does, but I, I, you know, on one hand, you think, boy, as soon as we do this, there's going to be this tremendous, and I think some of us are hoping that it will. I don't think I see that happening. I don't see a profound change as a result of what are ultimately fairly modest. I do have a couple of questions, specific things. And I don't know, Chair, whether we intend to go through these kind of item by item, and then these really kind of four proposals here. I don't have any problem at all with what, at least in the order that's in the staff report. The fourth one that's been suggested by Ms. Miller that we ought to remove some of these conditions on the discretion of the planning commission. That seems to me to be a very straightforward. I think we should and simply let that parking plan come to the commission for its own discretion. The outdoor dining expansion, the only question I had a very kind of a specific one, we deleted the information that says 200. Where does the 400 then come from? And I assume it's somewhere else in the code. But if we look at the ordinance or the resul that's in front of us. We've stricken the 200 square foot, but we haven't stipulated unless I'm misreading or missed it somewhere. That we're changing that to 400 as a maximum. And then a couple of other little things like I, I question I, I question whether if we allow tandem parking. That we should restrict that to strictly employees to the extent that what's worked very well for many places. Is that the first place is an employee, but the space behind it. Is the, is open to guests or open to clients or customers or whatever, little things like that. I had a couple of other minor things about that. But generally speaking, and I spent a lot of time looking at this. And I could show you all my silly notes where I've been keeping counting up, trying to decide. Doc, I know you guys send us black and white, by the way, but I printed out the color and then looked at it. And tried to count the lots and see how many were commercial and how many were, you know, restaurants and so forth. I, I, I think this is a fairly. Modest, I would say, first step in looking at parking. I think when we get to the residential, it's going to be a much more complicated process. And that, that's sort of my initial comments.
Okay, well, so if I captured it correctly, where you're sitting now, you are generally with a few questions and maybe some clarifications. About some specificity that you're generally in favor of the recommended ordinance, which if we go to that, which is exhibit A. So what we're doing tonight is making, we're not approving the ordinance, we are saying we are sending a recommendation to council. That they approve the ordinance. And so if we all go to exhibit A, which is the ordinance. And that would be page 11 of our packet, page three. Of the specific document, what you're saying there is within these one, two. These chapters, you have a couple of questions, but you're now, you're in support. I heard a all-out support for moving to discretionary on some parking plans. Didn't sound like you had any, did you have anything about, are your questions quick enough? You think you want to go through them now?
Well, I guess very quickly.
Do that and then maybe it takes.
Let's do that. And to answer your broader question, yeah, I think I'm in favor of the proposal, the entire proposal. But I did have a question on page three where we've stricken 200, but we've said in the text, it's going to be 400. I, someone help me, where, just where's that stipulated? Martha looks like she knows.
Yeah, and I have different page numbers than you, but where. And the 400 is, is under, in your off-street parking, commercial and business uses, 1744030. E8.
Okay, I got it. Right, restaurants onsite. Okay, so exactly. So, okay, I just didn't make that connection. And then the only other, I guess, kind of specific question I have was about, do we want to in fact stipulate? That if we're in, so now I'm, wherever I'm in, the off-street parking mixed uses. Stipulate that how tandem parking is allocated. I, you know, you can probably tell me better what's best practice, but I just know from so many. Uses and very often you'll even see the sign, you know, somebody will stick on the back of their car, park here kind of thing. And it's probably easier. To, to regulate that.
And that would give more flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could certainly do that.
Pete, can you, can you call that out? I, I had trouble finding it, but now I'm there.
It's under off-street parking mixed use, it's item number two. Or no, it's, yeah, Roman New World two or number two, somebody numbered these confusingly.
Yeah, no, it's seven, yeah, not 110, and then we go to residential parking, then we go under non-residential parking. tandem parking may be permitted.
Number three.
Number three, tandem parking to meet required shall be used for employee parking. So your recommendation, theirs, we just strike, strike.
I'd probably just strike that with the intention that. They have the flexibility to do that. I know as a customer, you, the last thing you want to do is be parked, the first person in a tandem place. So that probably doesn't work.
Do you have, um, do you have a recommended language or just, do you just want to strike or do you want to say tandem parking to meet required parking for non? Residential uses period, or do you want to say can be used or some, well, we'll maybe leave that to last, but I'll mark that as something. You marked that down, it's page 19 of our staff report. Okay, anything else?
I think that's it. As I say, I've been persuaded, I guess.
Very well. Commissioner Peterson, did you want to take a stab?
I can, I can weigh in. Yeah, there's a lot here. I had a lot of questions and, you know, to. To my earlier comments and those tonight and those elsewhere, it's just, the question is how do we, you know, balance the needs of different interests to find what's best for the community? And get diverse viewpoints. I think, I think Rob raised an excellent question or he made a comment about, are we sort of? You know. Kind of kicking the cannon down the road on parking. I mean, my interpretation on that is hopefully that this isn't sort of a. You know, an unfunded mandate where we're sort of, you know. Allowing parking to just sort of be handled elsewhere, but that we don't really need the extra parking that some of this. The flexibility we're providing, can we provide it by people that are already there, could be provided by existing parking structures, can be provided by other modes of transportation? So, I mean, I think if we thought that we were seriously sort of putting our head in the sand on, on parking requirements, then that. Wouldn't be okay, but I don't think that's what we're doing here. Although I do share, I think Pete raised an excellent point about. You know, learning the right lessons from other cities and. You know, there are probably commonalities and differences with, you know, San Jose and a bunch of other cities mentioned, never been to Buffalo. But, you know, that's the thing, learning the right lesson. So for a city that most people do own a car, most people do have to commute out. Outside of the city and there aren't always public transportation options. So, you know, again, I think we have to learn those right lessons. I think the more I listen to Martha and others and, you know, ask the questions that we ask, the answers that we get back. I think this is reasonable. I'm also mindful of the fact of what we're deciding tonight. So we're debating this for then. Approval to pass it on to city council. I know that we have city council members, at least a few of them, maybe more that will. Listen to this debate. And so they're listening to the debate and us asking the right questions is equally as important as the specifics of what we pass along. The one thing I do have a question on and. In terms of flexibility, and I'll just call it, you know, number four on the slide, sort of page 53, really the huge handout. You know, in terms of parking plan, I mean, when we say that. You know, 25% of required parking be provided on site and 80% of it can be satisfied by common parking facilities. That doesn't strike me as terribly onerous. Unless it flies on its face. Now, if that is directly in conflict with some of the other. Things in here, then I get it, but saying that, you know, only 25% of. The parking can be had, needs to be on site and that 80% of it can be through a common parking plan. That doesn't strike me as terribly, you know, onerous or restrictive. I'm open to clarification by Martha, I see she unmuted, so I. I, I'd just be curious your perspective on that.
Um, actually, I can speak to that because of experience with that standard and the challenges we face in town.
Okay.
On some very small lots, especially in our pedestrian districts. That requirement basically eliminates the opportunity for someone even taking advantage of the in-lu parking program. Because let's say a project requires a dozen parking spaces or 10 spaces, then they have to figure out a way to put three of them on site.
Okay.
So I, I think you can kind of just conceptually get it for small lots and so.
I get it, I get it for small lots. I do get it for really small lots.
And so I think that's, that's an important thing that's been a constraint for, I think, a lot of innovative projects. And again, the planning commission will still have a role in making sure that a, a project makes sense for an in-lu. You know, an in-lu program.
Okay.
And I would say overall, with all these other things we're changing, the need for the in-lu is going to drastically be reduced. I mean, if you think in terms of the overall effects of some of the other standards, but the in-lu is still a very important program for. What some people characterize as the catalyst projects. And having that flexibility will, it just create more opportunities for innovative solutions.
Okay, but this doesn't, this doesn't tie into the other things we're doing because those where we have intensification of use, there's no requirement for incremental parking. So, correct.
And I don't, I'm sorry, Martha may have had some insight on that too, but that's just my perception from dealing with this provision in the past.
Martha, do you have any care to weigh in?
No, it was just for, you know, constrained sites, but also at the same time, because it is a discretionary approval by the planning commission. If you felt with some development that they should provide a certain number on site, that would be, you know, you can include that in your approval. So again, it's. Just to give that flexibility for you to weigh the merits of whatever comes before.
Right, right. And obviously, when, when it, when we allow planning commission to weigh the merits, we then allow. The city council to overrule us, right, and pull it and make changes there, which happened with. A smaller, shall we say, hotel development. Whether the right decision was made there or not, but I know there were some in-lu issues there. You know what? I generally support it. I think, I know a lot of work's gone into it, so I'm curious to see how it plays out. But I think it's a positive step in the right direction. I appreciate the additional clarification from Martha Miller and others. And I intend to support the, the staff recommendation and pass this along to the city council for their consideration.
Very well. Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Eisen.
Yes, Chair Rice. I'm perhaps just going to oversimplify this. I intend to support this along with whatever suggestions or tweaks my fellow commissioners have. On balance, this is going to make things better, not worse. There may be some unintended consequences we don't see right now, but on balance, I think this is a great step in the right direction. So I'm ready to have my fellow commissioners do whatever editing they want to do and then I'm prepared to support it.
Short and sweet and to the point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sam.
Thank you, Chair Rice. In spite of my concerns about not having enough parking. And, and being desirous of adding parking. So that the new customers that these developments might attract to Hermosa Beach, and we're hoping it does. And, and I'm more positive about that, I think. That this will help small businesses expand themselves and, and attract more customers and, and be more successful. I hope it does. I, I think that's what we're trying to do here and I, and I. I, I think this ordinance will, will accomplish that fact. But I think the, the, the off fall from that is that there's going to be more cars here. Because people have a tendency to come, let's just address the restaurants for the moment. People come from other places to eat dinner here and, and they certainly, they, they may take an Uber perhaps or. But they're not going to ride a bicycle at night to come to a dinner at, let's say, Palmyra, that great sea bass that they have there or something. They're going to come from Manhattan or Redondo or wherever, and they're going to come in a car. You know, it's just simple math there. And, and I'm concerned that that parking may reach into the neighborhoods and, and I'm concerned that they're, when all the, when the lots we have now are full. And the street spaces are all full and they're driving around looking for a place to park. That's kind of what I'm concerned about. But in spite of my concerns. You know, I, I think this ordinance is, is a miraculous, wonderful thing and I plan to support it completely. I agree with most everything that everyone said here this evening. I'm, I'm also quite pleased that I made the comments that I did earlier. Because I think, at least I'd like to think that it stimulated some, some debate among citizens that phoned in. And a little spirited at points where whether they agreed with me or not. You know, people came in and they came with opinions about, yeah, we should have parking spaces and we should do this. And now we don't need that at all, you know, more bike racks should take care of it. So I, I'm glad that that happened and like I said, in spite of my own concerns, I think this is a wonderful thing and. Glad to support it completely.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay.
Thank you.
To me, I, I would say that I started the process with the same sense of. I don't even know what the word is, just this was a, a challenge to look at and to really try to. Break down and understand where it could go and is it getting us to where the vision and the policies of the general plan update. Stay. Along as Chair's laid out well, that we still continue to balance. The uses against quality of life, so it's community input, both for those that live here and those that are doing, having businesses here. And those, the few of us that actually, I guess, work here. So with that being said. I did have a request for more information and I certainly do wish that we could establish a database. Of what exists here. I think it is a missing tool and I, we heard tonight from a director. Or a member of the board of the Chamber of Commerce that he's handed us these surveys and so I just feel like that is such a missing link. It also provides a basis for us to gauge how we're doing. When these resolutions pass and we in effect change, if we don't even know where we are now, we have a general sense. But we, we see that that assessed or information is just not reflective of the actual use. When we get change, I think we're not going to have the complete picture, be it a great change, a small change or, or none. And I think those are going to be really important components. So I would really like to make a strong call to action that we get a better database for that. And we have a better picture of existing uses that actually reflects what we want to do. I think I felt that the economic market update was really important. I'm grateful to city council for approving that and having that expenditure because it gave me a level of, you know, more information, which I'm always after. But also sort of confidence that what we've been talking about is still in some ways supported. And so some of the personal takeaways that I had about retail mix were substantiated. And I think what that report does in combination with the better, better database. Is sets our city up to proactively work on economic development. In other words, figure out who we'd like to come here. Merchandise and sell the changes that we have to our codes and attract those folks. The city of El Segundo has done it, 100 businesses and whatever their timeline was, we're, we're not El Segundo and I recognize that. But they had, they set a goal of who they wanted to go get and they went and go, and got them and have those businesses. And so I think that combination of where we are now and what we believe to be standing still today, the right mix. Of commercial uses will be, will be very powerful tools moving forward to. Make these proposed amendments come to life in actuality in the best, you know, best ways possible and the most meaningful ways. I think it's been pointed out tonight by a number of the callers, so I think primarily we're all property owners. That this is an important issue at hand and they want to see the change. I would have liked to see more comment from sort of the rest of the folks that live here and, and want to see. Changes in their commercial offerings. So that, that was a bit disappointing. But it is what it is. This has been an ongoing process. I know that the notifications have gone out, certainly our agenda was posted. So I would have liked to heard a little bit more. So generally, I feel like we obviously have a consensus, we've heard from four. That with a couple tweaks here and there that we are going to move forward and support this. Um, and so I will um, lend my support as well, I think at this point. I'd like to go ahead and go through this finally, because I think that, as Vice Chair pointed out. I think council relies on us to do that. Uh, really detailed look at it, and so to make sure, um, we do our job as the land use expert folks in recommending. Um, that we give them policies that have really been um. Well reviewed and uh, checked, so. Commissioner Hoffman, if I could ask you maybe to start um, on the ordinance. And let's just move through it really quickly and make sure we have not. Missed anything, because I actually thought it was a good catch, it's weird, Martha, in the code. That we make a comment about that outdoor dining and the thing just dies and it leaves you with, well, what is it we can do, and then we have to go to another section of the code. Where it says. Two hundred then up to. Eliminate it entirely, strike the whole thing, but, so that, those are the kinds of things, um, that seem clunky to me, so. Pete, if you want to sort of start and just go through, I'm on page eleven of the, of the packet.
All right, I'll, I'll do that in.
Ordinance.
And as I'm turning to that page, Martha, one quick question I, that I saw in my own notes here, but. Uh, the chair pointed out, uh, we need a little more, it would have, we would have appreciated a little more public input, one of the questions that I did get. Was well, this. In your experience. At all incentivize, or maybe that's even the wrong word, but permit more franchise establishments to come here. Thinking, for example, the case that they brought up is Subway, Subway got into the either or building, as we all call it. By virtue of the fact that we agreed to call it a snack shop and they got in under the snack shop. Shop exemption, et cetera, et cetera, but now we've eliminated, in fact, we basically eliminated the, the snack shop. Is this something that, and I don't know well enough. I'm sure that McDonald's knows you have to have X number of square feet, you have to have X amount of parking, you have to, you know, before they would consider a franchise or wherever. And I'm not picking out McDonald's, but I'm sure that's the case. Any sense of that? Whether anything that we're doing here might in fact. Permit, if not incentivize. Uh, franchise type businesses to come to town.
I am absolutely no expert on, on that, but um, my understanding is if Subway's interested in coming. They're interested in coming for a whole host of other factors that really this isn't a, a significant part of that. They have. Formulas and all kinds of things that they're looking at, um. This would not be a.
Well, and, and you know.
A, a game changer for them.
Yeah, but we did use that example, like I say, the, the reality is they wouldn't have gotten in except for the snack shop exemption. Historically, and now you have to ask yourself, are there other stuff, and I, I, you know, it's just. You use the word, what we all would love to have as a mom and pop kind of retail base here of. Okay, but that notwithstanding, understanding, or, I guess that's one of those things, well, it was on the record often raised the question, what's gonna happen? When we get our first jack in the box downtown, um, so the only items, again, we're starting with the, the first, just going through this. Uh, we clarified that it was really just related to. The question about tandem parking and whether or not we really should include that, I would suggest that we. Allow greater flexibility there, um, I think tandem parking works best when employees are in the first space, not in both. Um, and I think that's the, 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 the only, you know, language that I propose that. We might reconsider.
Okay, so the recommendation then on two seven three is tandem parking to meet required parking for non-residential uses. Or can be used. Just seems, I don't know, that just seems like it's in such a bizarre.
I actually think that three could just be eliminated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Strike. And then. That would be part of. A parking plan, if it had to come to a discretionary piece, we would, we, we would talk about it. If it was something over. A certain square footage that required that parking.
Uh, the parking plan would not be required for tandem parking, it is required for valet parking.
Ah, right, okay, good, good, I'm glad, let me ask that, okay. Alrighty, so Pete, nothing, nothing else, everything's seen. Alrighty, I'll go around the horn here, Vice Chair, did you have any specific pieces? That you wanted to address in the language of this multi-page resolution?
Um, no, I do not, I appreciate the, the input of um, Commissioner Hoffman, and otherwise I have no other comments.
Okay, Commissioner Seaman.
Uh, no comment.
Thank you, Isaac, Rob?
Uh, no, I have no other changes that I would like to see.
Okay, very well, so um, back to the very beginning of our staff report, uh, we have a recommended action. That we uh. Adopt a resolution that recommend. Adopt a text amendment to the code regarding off-street parking in commercial zones. And the determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, so that is what is before us tonight. Um, I would believe that the maker of the motion would refer to the. Small changes that we just made to strike the, the tandem. Um, I think that's really all we did, actually, um, and so do we have, do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation with the change noted.
Second.
Any further conversation or deliberation on the motion before us? My Chair Shang saying no, Rob saying no, okay, shall we call the roll?
Commissioner Seaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Izan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes.
And Chair Rice. Motion carries, this item will be presented to the, the city council uh, upon availability.
Wow. Look what we just did. Everybody. Lots of thumbs up, lots of smiles, Martha, thank you very much, good to see you, we look forward to seeing you, I guess, the next set of stuff. Be well.
You'll see me again, thank you.
Okay. We are now at section four of our meetings, staff items.
Um, the first staff item is uh, the verbal report on city council actions, um. The city council, um, as you know, took jurisdiction of your decision on the H two O hotel. Lobby, uh, registered guest only beer and wine, um, and. Took uh, two meetings to make their final decision, but they did unanimously support. The request as modified by the applicant to limit it to beer and wine. As you recall, the commission's decision was to deny the request for full alcohol.
Ken, can you, can you clarify, because that was a pretty long uh, council session. Uh, where they did come, where they did get to an agreement, um, so wine and beer till ten.
That's correct.
In the lobby, lounge, lobby lounge.
Oh yes, and they did make one uh, minor amendment to the conditions of approval to make it clear that. The al- the beer and wine could be served to. Guests of various verified registered, so it's verified registered guests and their guests. They didn't want it to sound too limiting, that it was just registered guests only.
Okay, so registered guests and their guests, was there, I admit I might have nodded off. Was there a provision that stated? The purchase by the guest, what is, who, who can, who can buy it, is it charged to the room or is it?
The way it was worded on the recommendation of the city attorney, um, available alcohol shall only be available, so it, it didn't use the word purchase.
Alcohol could only be available to guests.
Verified registered guests and their guests.
And their guests, okay, and then there was no language around the actual transaction, whether it's charged to a room or.
That's correct, yeah, that was not, that was not in our draft and that was not added.
Okay, and um, no provision and then pay however, cash, credit card, charge. Okay, so just trying to get clear where it ended up, so, because that was. There was a long conversation you guys had, and actually I, I think there was a difference of opinion between you and the city attorney and what the actual. So.
I never like when that happens, but I, I defer to the city attorney.
I, and I only pointed out because I just could not wrap my head around where it actually ended, and I think it's important for us to know. Um, where it did end up and where they, where they decided, um, how, what a guest and a guest of a guest is defined, so thank you for that update. Do we have um, any other city council actions that you wanted to update us on?
Um, no, um, but under B, I guess I would like to give you an update for major planning projects, we are scheduling the. City council consideration of the draft housing element at next Tuesday's meeting, so that's July twenty seventh.
Okay, and. We hear a main develop. That he said he would uh, be open to, you heard Peter Nolan and Brothers Burritos and affordable house, I just. Thought that was interesting that that came through.
Sorry, Chair, you froze for a moment, maybe.
Am I back?
Yes.
Sorry about that, you guys. Don't know what is happening, um. My question was, it, it was interesting, we heard tonight from one of our callers, uh, Peter Nolan, that he would be interested in. Doing affordable housing. At the Brothers Burrito. Location, so I just would offer that as an, an interesting update and maybe encourage him to be vocal at that. At that next meeting, um. So that is great, do you have any updates for us on when we will see? The city yard, it's been. On our tentative for a long time, I know we're waiting on environmental impact reports, any update for us there?
I'll have to check with um, our, you know, Doug, our environmental programs manager and public works as to the timing on that. Um, it definitely was. Approved in as a CIP project, and I think there was some additional funding in the budget, so it's definitely going ahead, but I, I just, I don't know the timing.
Okay. I think the last update we got was we were waiting on in a, the environmental. Okay, so any update that you can provide us on when, and with, and that comes to us, right, or no?
Yes, it comes to the planning commissioner role is um, to review the precise development plan.
And so the PDP, okay.
And to make sure it has enough parking, oh no, just kidding.
Hey, Flaherty, we're here, he would say absolutely, he needs to park those, all those trucks and give that as a place to dump and turn. Watching, you're gonna get a comment on that, okay, um. I guess that's it for those two items, we are moving on to um, the planning commission tentative future agenda items noting we did. Um, have a supplemental on that as well, it looks like one of the projects came off of the tentative for next month. Um, it was a one twenty twentieth, twenty fifth street, that small lot exemption. So what is before us then tonight to look at? And to receive and file would be that revised or right?
Yeah, and then, of course, with the understanding, we'll, we'll be bringing back the um, tri annual review discussion about. The deck.
And then, so we'll add the duck. Okay, all right, do we have any comments, questions on our tentative of staff from my colleagues? Now, can we go ahead and have a motion receiving file? Thank you, Vice Chair. You're welcome, we have motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Carlos, can you call vote?
Commissioner Seaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Izan.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes.
Chair Rice.
Yes. And has that brought us to the end, I'm afraid to look, oh no, we're not done. Commissioner Items. One have anything? Mr. Seaman, do you have anything? No items. Mr. Isaac. Vice Chair. Nothing.
No.
Pete, I know you want to go get a Subway sandwich, no?
I did have a question, Ken, in light of the council doing a kind of hybrid, any. Likelihood or change in the format or how we're going to conduct our meetings uh, next month or in the future. A foreseeable future anyway.
Um. I don't know if you heard very late that meeting, the council actually asked staff to come back to talk about that on their next agenda. Um, about whether hybrid is appropriate, given how things are changing. With the um. Pandemic, obviously still having some life to it and. Um, the hybrid did frankly, didn't go all that well, and it's very staff intensive, so. Um, for now, my intent, as long as everyone agrees, would be keep the planning commission meeting virtual until, you know. Till we're really ready to go for a full in-person, but, but we can also wait to hear what commission, my council's direction is as well.
Alright, thank you.
I, I think, Ken, from your perspective, um, as a staff, then I'm not sure whether you were at where you were. That's my understanding that for the, so only two councilmen, so only two members of the body can be live in council chambers. Because three would be a majority and you can't, you can't have that, it's good, it's a brown neck. So the max number we can have in count, in the chambers, under these hybrid rules would be two, and then my understanding is. The panelists, the council members could not see the two that were in chambers, so they could hear them, but they couldn't see them. Because I kept hearing them say, Justin say, I, I can't see them, do, do one of you guys have your hands raised? Um, do I have that right, was the whole meeting that they couldn't see who was in chambers?
I'm, I'm not aware of that, so maybe that's beyond my understanding, because as a. Staff panelist, I could see.
You could.
Everybody, um.
I don't know whether it's because the mayor was off, I, I'm not sure, but it seemed really, really clunky and there were some feedback issues and. It's really hard to hear, so I know when we get back up on that dais and we're in the boxes. We're really gonna have to lean into those microphones, because I had a lot of trouble hearing. Um, folks that were up there, I just, things were muffled, and then with the mask, it got really difficult, so thank you for, I guess, keeping us on Zoom at this time. But we'll hear more when you have that uh, update on the future of our meetings, so with that, I guess we're staying, Pete, at six o'clock.
You know what, I, I appreciate that, but I, I, I guess what, so no one misunderstands, I, I hope we're either one or the other. The hybrid thing absolutely doesn't work, and so I agree with Ken. If we are able to come back fully, I'm anxious to do that, I think it's best for the public. But the kind of intermediate step doesn't work at all, it doesn't serve any purpose.
Agreed.
Doesn't seem to make sense.
It wa- it was, I thought it was tough going for everybody, um, all involved, okay. So with that, I guess, let's um, move to adjourn. Motion, so we have a second, motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Thank you very much, thank you to staff, thank you Patrick for being with us tonight, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, you're welcome, good night, everybody.
Bye.